Okay.
...of April 26, 2021 is now an open session. Our first order of business is now to go directly into executive session. So that's what we will do at this time. So it is again 5:40 and we will close this meeting for an executive.
Okay, we can start.
And our first order of business here is open forum. I don't think we had anyone signed up, did we, Kim, before? So we will now go on to the workshop session.
Yeah, so I know we're running a little bit late, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Dr. Schiaver and Ms. Brown to move, move us through pretty quickly. In a nutshell, I know that many of us were, remember when we were trying to find an answer for overcrowding at the ECDC. We looked at a building in Grapevine that was a teardown that was really expensive. And then we looked at a even larger building that was a little bit more than what we would want to, to put into that. And then I was walking the halls with Dr. Halliburton at Cross Timbers and she said, "I really wish we could keep the kids here." And then we both thought at the same time, well, this might be an opportunity for us to open up ECDC at its facility there by Call of Heritage and increase our enrollment at the ECDC by keeping something at Cross Timbers. So what we're going to talk to you tonight about very briefly is just an idea that we have. We don't have numbers behind it, but we just wanted to gauge the interest of the board before we put a lot of effort into it. So, Dr. Schiaver.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. Excited to talk about this topic. There, it's been a challenging year for care for our youngest children that we care for in the district at our ECDC. As Dr. Ryan mentioned, we had, we, on the spot, had to think differently. How do we continue this service? And as you know, we began offering the ECDC North, as we call it, at Cross Timbers Middle School. Obviously, in this scenario, it is set up in spaces that would be used for the middle school, such as the Learning Commons. So as we talk about our options here. So here. Not moving. Getting to end, quick. The topic of conversation is to create a permanent site for the ECDC expansion at a district campus. One of the, the essence of the expansion for the ECDC is something that we have talked about and really tried to have a vision for, for many years, just due to the nature of the need that we know exists with our employees. So with, and in this picture, you see our, our children are sitting in the Cross Timbers Library, Learning Commons. It is not the proposal that it stay the way that it is designed right now, but that we would consider a hallway that would seclude the expansion of the ECDC and really isolate it from the functioning of the Cross Timbers Middle School. Going to... They have it on their screen, so they can see.
Okay. So, one of the greatest benefits of this expansion would be the possibility to increase capacity, so we can serve.
We don't have a screen, so we can call and then pull it up. I can't close, they're all being... They're switch, they're trying to switch it back.
There we go.
Thank you.
And, all right, so the possibility to increase capacity, so we can serve more families, like Dr. Schiaver mentioned. Increased capacity could allow us the option to use the ECDC as a recruitment tool, which is right now, we cannot do that because we stay so full. And in the childcare industry, it's standard practice for center employees to be able to bring their children to the same location. And so increasing capacity could allow us to open up space to provide that opportunity for ECDC employees and their children. What's my move button here?
No.
Oh, it does, it's just...
It does, but it jumps to the last.
Okay, there we go. I just need to be patient with my arrow, sorry. So, current need, the renovations that we're currently doing at the ECDC will allow us to increase enrollment for the upcoming year. And we'll be able to provide care for about 40 more children in the 21, 22 school year than we do currently. And this has greatly decreased the number of families that we have on our waiting list. However, we already have 40 employees on the waitlist for next year. We've enrolled, we're full, and we have 40 waiting to get in. And that doesn't take into account new hires that we may hire between now and August. And, you know, just really no possibility of getting them in at this time. And the convenience of location for some of our employees. Right now, if you look at our enrollment and the current enrollment, the, the families that will return, about 50% of our returning families will be at one of these locations located on the north side of the district. I'm gonna push it once and see if it goes before I push it again. Ah, I was just about to push it again. So, the, an existing facility to follow state licensing standards, the facility would need to have an outdoor play area, plenty of sinks for adults and children over the age of 18 months, need a hand washing sink for them. There may need to be some adjustments, so we can provide adequate access to appropriate sized toilets for our kiddos that use those and need to potty train. And then possibly some interior room design. Currently at CTMS, we've taken two large rooms and divided them with room dividers, but we would probably need to make some adjustments there to make the rooms more appropriate size for the ages of the children that we need to serve.
As we've discussed in some of our considerations for finding another location, the real estate market makes it a little bit unreasonable to consider a completely new facility. With the facility needs that Ms. Brown talked about, we do feel like that would be considerably less than trying to find other property. Just a little bit of a historical view to give you an idea from the revenue after expenses at the end of the year. A typical year, not counting this year or last year, the revenue after all expenses and taking care of has ranged from $114,000 to $178,000. That's a pretty wide gap, and that has been dependent upon what type of site improvements may happen in the summer at the ECDC. For instance, one of the low years, we did considerable work on the kitchen area. So that's why that would have ranged that much. For the upcoming year, we are anticipating around $174,000, which would be similar to our high number that we've had before. And those are approximate values. That's to give you an idea of what we would be looking at in offsetting our cost from those revenues if we were to move forward with some of those renovations that may need to happen to a facility. As Ms. Brown mentioned, the students that are currently on the waitlist, it would easily create four new rooms. So four rooms would take the waitlist off. However, that would not fully meet our needs. It would take additional rooms. Also mentioned, we are just beginning the hiring season, and all through the hiring season, we would love to be able to use the ECDC as a recruitment tool. However, when all of the spots are already full, we can't really use that as that tool. So we would definitely need to look at creating more than four rooms if we were to be able to have that opportunity. And of course, there would also be some costs associated to the equipment and supplies in order to outfit the rooms as needed. This is the most delayed device I believe of. Okay. So really, this was just to give you an idea of our thoughts and consideration. Get that out there so that you could consider that. To truly move forward, we would need to do some things that, you know, would make this a little more public. We need to survey our staff to know beyond the 40 that are already on the waitlist. How many more staff members do we have that may be in need of childcare or might consider moving their children from where they are currently in daycare to a district facility? In addition to that, we would anticipate that because 50% of the existing families that are signed up for next year are at a north location campus, how many would want to transition from the ECDC location now to, say, ECDC North? So that we would know where our empty spots would be. Also, that facility assessment to know exactly what needs to be changed, along with talking to our licensing representative. We certainly have the temporary license for our really emergency operation that we have right now at Cross Timbers. But if we were looking to do that as a permanent location, what items could we phase in and do over time? What items would they require upfront? So that we would have an idea realistically of when could we be up and operational if this were something that we see that we've got the staff need and that is supported for us to move forward with. So that's, really wraps up the thought process. A, a positive from the winter storm, if you've not encountered one. It forced us to think differently about where we can support our families for early childcare. And while there have been some hiccups, and it's certainly, you know, using the Learning Commons is not the plan and the vision for how that would move forward. We would be looking for an isolated hallway that would have a specific entrance and exit that would not interfere with the operations of the middle school. And we would need to move forward with being able to study that more in depth for that next step.
Do we, there are any questions before they move forward?
I think it's wonderful, what, out of the box, way to meet that need, it's incredible.
How many rooms are available?
Louis. Louis. Your microphone. We can, we can hear you, but the recording can't hear you.
In considering where we've kinda eyeballed some hallways that may be isolated in the way that we need them to be, four to six, I think is definitely something that could be managed, possibly more. We need to really get into the facility a little more to have a complete understanding of that and dividing of rooms and what that might allow us to do.
You meant to come, concept of, or would it be there separate entrance?
Yes, we would definitely need a hallway. Part of our ECDC classes right now are in the D hallway, which has an external door that our families come through. If we were to have a permanent location, we would want whichever hallway we were entering to be the location for ECDC entrance and only ECDC. So that would be considered for that facility need.
Do the surrounding schools offer this type of benefit to their staff?
There are a number of districts around the DFW area that do offer childcare. It varies, just depending on the capacity of the district, what facilities they have available, on really how large of an operation it is.
So your step here is you're going to, what, survey the parents? So would they be interested in staying at a location like that if they had the opportunity? Is that your, what?
There are really two steps to surveying. It would be with our families that are coming or returning families.
Okay.
If we had two locations, which location would they wish to be enrolled? We would do some explaining in that survey that we're not proposing it be in the same location in Cross Timbers, but it would be redesigned specifically in that isolated hallway. And then the step beyond that would be really a survey out to our overall staff to say, "If we have openings and they're at these two locations, how many more might we get on the waitlist and would be interested in making that transition?"
Part of that survey, we are going to talk to Nutritional Services as far as if there's any kind of stress on them, having to feed littles and bigs and the different food that they've got to, because I know we have an issue with keeping Nutritional Services on, hiring them. I just would hate to put more stress on them without getting their opinion.
And ideally, if we're moving forward with this as being a, an independent, permanent location for ECDC North, for instance, D Hall is the old home ec classroom that has kitchen equipment. So ideally, the ECDC would be a standalone within that building and have its own operation, just like it does in our existing ECDC building.
Thank you.
But all of that has to be explored.
Yes.
Which is what we're really seeking in our conversation tonight.
Okay.
Is to really explore and find out where would it logistically work? Does it work in that hallway where that's existing? Or is there another location? And would it involve our nutrition services so that we would have more information from all of those departments?
Okay, well, that's nice to know. I think anytime we can add another benefit to, for our teachers is just a, a great thing.
I actually drove through there the other day. They've got it fenced in for a little park for the kids out by the gaga pits behind the cafeteria. And so they've got it well set up there.
And that would be, there would have to be a more permanent
Right.
Playground area, outdoor playground area. So those are all considerations that, as I said, really seeking approval from you guys to move forward as we gather more information to determine how feasible this is, what would be the timeline, and then certainly the needs of our staff.
Well, we're excited to hear back from you.
Right. And on that timeline, I know you've kind of laid out, but roughly, what do you see here happening? What is the timeline, rough?
Best case, we could have some form of operation phased in for August. That is if licensing allowed us to phase in any building renovations. You know, I think worst case is there are, the changes to facility are so extreme that we might need the year to offer that the following August or at some point, you know, through that year. We've got to really dig into the facility to understand those needs.
I think exciting, exciting. Thinking out, like, like Becky said, really thinking outside the box here. So this is great. Thank you both very much.
They've got, set on that, send that with a message to try. Thank you, Dan. Asia, can you hear us? Asia, can you hear us?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Oh, yay! Yes, can you hear me?
Now they don't have it on the desktop. Kristen, do you know?
Did you email it to Dan? So, yeah, they're on the desktop.
So how do I get it to go? Oh, she's gonna switch, okay.
There, you know, it goes.
Okay, tonight I want to start, just reminder of what the budget parameters were that we presented back in February and were approved by the board in developing this budget. And I want to talk about a few of those parameters that have been changed, and those are highlighted in red. The first one is the federal flag control revenues. The original parameter had that revenue set at $1 million. I went back historically and looked back at like the last three years, and our revenue that we've received has been over $1.5 million. And just as a reminder, this, this revenue source is really unknown to the district until we get the check in the mail. And so several years ago, we started making it a budget parameter, just in case we were over that parameter or under that parameter. And so I feel like, just looking back at the historical information, that we can bump that up to $1.5 million. This past year, we received $1.9 million. The next parameter that we revised is the payroll budget reduction. So the parameter that was presented in February included $1 million. And we've been doing this for several years now, where we were, we know that when we build a budget, we build it for every single person that's going to be at work every single day. And it's based on what our spring salary numbers are, the people who are in place when we're building the budget in the spring. And so several years ago, we put that parameter in just to get a little bit closer to the budget. And so I decided to go back and do an analysis and look back at, historically, what we've left in the budget and our payroll. And over the last five years, it's been about 3% on average. So I thought, well, if we could go ahead and reduce the payroll budget 1.5%, that could get us a little bit closer to the actual number that we have. So that additional percentage was about $800,000. So what we did was, we build the whole payroll budget, and then we do a line item, negative $1 million. So we just up that to $1.8 million. Then the other thing, looking at the non-payroll side, I did an analysis, looked to see, you know, kind of what percentage of the budget we've had on average. And, you know, our people are really good about, they spend what they need to spend. And if they have additional budget at the end of the year, you know, that's kind of where we capture those savings. So just to get those non-payroll costs a little bit closer to the budget, I said, "Why don't we just reduce the non-payroll budget by 4%?" Now, in doing this, I, I excluded the fixed costs, because those fixed costs, we know what they are, we budget what they are. So I did not take the reduction out of those. Okay, so let's start talking about the proposed position adjustments for 21, 22. The first two line items are related to the I University Prep Program. And back in January, we had done a budget workshop, looking at what it would look like to grow that program. And so we are currently using an enrollment number of 1,400 for this budget. So to factor in the enrollment for that, we needed to add the staff. So there's seven teachers and one counselor, and this, these costs are offset by the additional state funding for I University Preps that we will receive. Line three is reducing teacher positions based on projected enrollment through attrition. So, looking at our enrollment, we know we're projecting our enrollment to be lower. And so we have worked with HR very closely in identifying the positions that will be reduced. And so the position reductions are based on just our current student to teacher ratio standards that we use. Then line four, we are going to reduce 25 kids U positions based on projected enrollment. And we, with the pandemic, we've seen our kids U enrollment decline. And so what I, we needed to do for this budget is we went ahead and projected our revenue based on the current enrollments. And then we had the expenditures reflect that same amount. And so in order to do that, we had several, well, we had 25 positions that are currently not filled, and so we didn't need to budget for them, certainly since we didn't have the revenue to offset it. Now, once school starts and we get registrations and we say we have a waitlist at a campus, we will certainly look at that revenue and look at adding a position back to support that revenue, but it will just be through an amendment. So we're not going to do it with the original budget that's being proposed. So, the net amount, net impact is a decrease of $699,874. Now, last month, Tazby presented the information to you guys about what, what we, where we were as far as compensation when compared to the market. And so at that, during that presentation, she presented a 1% model and a 2% model and kind of what that would cost. And so we used that information from Tazby. We have put it into our salary negotiations plan, which is the, the plan we use to build our budget. And these are the costs that were generated. So our cost factor in benefits, whereas Tazby was just straight salary. So on line one, you see the starting teacher pay, if we were to implement the 1% model would be $54,500. So on line one, you see the starting teacher pay, if we were to implement the 1% model, would be 54,500. The 2% model would be 55,000. Then line two just shows you what the current base payroll is. And three and four are the compensation adjustments for both 1% and 2%. There were some equity adjustments presented on that Tazby report, and so those are reflected in here. And then we take out the proposed position adjustments from the prior slide that we just discussed. And then line seven would be our total proposed compensation budget for those two different models. So we talked about payroll.
What was the equity adjustments to go refresh our memory? What was that?
Well, there were several on there. One was, was campus principals was the largest amount, but there were, there were several on there. Okay, the non-payroll budget, so we talked about the payroll budget, which is the largest piece of our budget, 87%. We're going to talk a little bit about the non-payroll. The non-payroll budget is 16,529,011. And that is after reducing it for that 4%, so reducing it 430,000. And this amount includes the fifth fixed cost budget. And so we've provided here a reconciliation for our beginning fixed cost budget. And then those adjustments that will need to be made for this budget cycle. So overall, the total adjustment is 114,173, leaving the proposed fixed cost budget at 6,226,900. Okay, so this slide, during the budget process, we identify those needs that will require, require additional budget. A lot of times, these are things that are increases in contracts or something that's been required by law that is increasing our cost. And so I provided you Exhibit A here that has all of the detail of these three numbers.
It's on the last page.
Yeah, the last page. And so line, line one is just the general fund budget. These are the amounts that we will need to add to the general operating budget. The first one is an increase in the SRO contract with the city. That contract has a 5% annual increase clause in there, and so we have to budget for that each year. We're adding 3,000 for an increase in pool chemical cost. We have not adjusted the swim center budget in many years. And he is seeing those pool chemical costs increasing, so we are providing him that little amount. Then the reading academy that is required by House Bill 3, we're adding 17,200. So the 21 budget included 28,000 for reading academy. We were going to implement it with like our leadership. And with COVID, we just delayed that implementation a year. So we'll be doing that in '22. But we're also adding Dove, so Dove will be our first campus. Those teachers will be going through the reading academy. And so that's why we had to add the 17,200. We're looking at adding 15,500 for preventative, preventative maintenance on pump and lift stations. Some of that equipment is approaching their useful life. And so if we can have someone come in and do preventative maintenance on that equipment, it'll make it last longer. And also just to prevent any further maintenance costs with any kind of backups. And then line five is our increase in landscaping and mowing contract. Currently, we have a bid out for these services. So we know that they're probably going to increase, so we just increased them 10% and that's the amount of that increase. So all, altogether, those equal a little under 70,000 that will be added to the general operating. Now, line two is what we're calling our contingency budget. And we are hopeful that we will be receiving some CARES Act funding. And we will use this for these contingency budget needs. Just right now, we haven't been told what the amount is, whether it's going to be supplemental. And so we just want, during the budget process, we identify that we have these needs. We're really hoping we can use CARES Act to help cover them. And so line six is student hotspots. Line seven is custodial supplies. And I see here my numbers have not been updated. So the one under custodial supplies is expanding our behavioral services to another campus. We currently have, I'm sure if it's one or two campuses, with some special staff for behavioral needs. And we really are seeing the need to expand that to another campus. And so that is something that would fall under the CARES Act funding, just with the caveat that it will probably be available for two years. And then that might be something that we'd have to roll into the general operating if we did not have any federal funds to cover those needs. So those total 276,000. The last line, three, is these items that we identified during the budget process. And they're like immediate needs, like we need them starting for the next fiscal year. And they're capital in nature. So we can use some of our available bond funds for these in order to keep them out of the MNO budget. And those total 3,126,684. And so we'll go through those. It says number five, I know that's not number five, but there's the WebEx license. And Kyle was able to get some quotes on these for multi-years so that the annual cost was decreased when we were able to commit to the multi-year contracts. So the WebEx license, we have for a four-year contract, that's 405,000. The next two items, eight and nine, is hardware software for attendance taking on buses and GPS for buses. And this amount includes the equipment and the annual maintenance for one year. We are going to work on getting a multi-year quote on these. So to see if we can get some cost savings on that. Line 10 is expanding Gaggle to grades, to all grades and I-University Prep. This is a five-year contract. We currently have Gaggle for grades five through 12. And I'm going to try to explain Gaggle, but it's a, it's a software that monitors our student devices. So it can capture words when we have students that maybe are, have put on their device self-harm, inappropriate information, those type of things. And so we currently have that for grades five through 12, but we want to expand it to all grades. The next few items, the next four items are also technology. So 11, 12, 13, and 14, these are all items that were covered by the 2016 bond. However, that specific line item for these specific expenditures have all been spent. And so we're out of that money, 2016 money in that line item. And so these are things that we have to have. So we're, these are also going to be appropriated with, using available bond funds. And then the last one is to purchase two-wheel lift stations, that's an amount of 18,993. That will just help our employees safely put up vehicles and other equipment when they're trying to fix it, when they're trying to do maintenance on it. So what we are planning to do is in May, we're planning to bring a recommendation to the board to appropriate available funds from the 2005 and the 2011 programs so that we can keep these costs out of the general operating budget. This is what we have historically done. I mean, we typically go through what our budget needs are. And any of those that we can identify as a capital item, we have asked the board to appropriate funds. So last May, we asked the board to appropriate 1.96 million to keep costs out of the general operating budget. Another thing I want to mention is that we are in the process, I mean, we have been for the past year in the process of putting together capital, a list of capital needs that could possibly be funded by the available funds from 2005, 2011. And now that we're, we have a few projects in 2016 wrapped up, we're kind of in a good place to go ahead and look at using the 2011 money for those things. If you recall, the first, first beginning of the 2016 bond program, I mean, we were really sweating whether we were going to even make budget with the way construction costs were. And luckily, because we have an amazing chief operations officer and architects and construction firm, some of those projects we did have under budget. So we feel comfortable looking at using those 2011 bond funds for some of those capital needs. And the plan is to bring, kind of finalize the list and bring it to the board sometime in the summer. So let's talk about revenue now. This is just our state funding comparison. And I have compared the preliminary budget to the 2021 projections. So we can see not much has changed, but what has changed is we are seeing about a 1.1 million dollar deficit in net funding. And that is just because we are projecting a lower ADA than what we currently are basing our state funding on.
Got a question. For the formula transition grant line, is it true that if we do not exercise the fifth golden penny, we'd still get an additional amount of revenue to that line and we could decrease our MNO rate?
So we would not get, the green line would not change.
Right, but the sourcing would.
The sources would.
So 1.5 would come from the state and we wouldn't have to tax our local property rate by the difference.
If we did not exercise the fifth golden penny, our formula transition grant would be about 6 million.
Okay, so then we could consider, on our point here on the MNO rate, making it a nine, a nine, five, six, four instead of nine, six, six, four.
That is something that the board could consider. There's other factors that were made in letting that fifth golden penny, not just looking at the formula transition grant, that was one piece of it. But at that time, we were seeing tax compression of 1.36 cents. We also had the flexibility in our INS tax rate. And so that was, those things were factored in making that decision because there was no impact to the taxpayers.
But the compression would only affect the tier one portion of the rate, correct?
Yes, but the tier one went down 1.36 cents. And that really offset the fifth golden penny. But then we were also able to, looking at the total tax rate, we were able to lower the total tax rate 2.36 cents and capture that golden penny.
Right, so we lowered the INS portion of the tax rate, two pennies or two something.
Two pennies.
Okay, so we lowered the INS portion, so it means we just didn't tax our community for the debt service piece. But then we increased by one golden penny, saying we decreased the tax rate in total, which I understand is a net tax rate decrease. However, my understanding is by exercising that one golden penny, we really did, in fact, increase taxes because we put the tax burden on the community instead of taking the free 1.5 million from the state.
Another factor that we.
Was that true though? Is that correct? We fore, we, we had to forego 1.5 million for the formula transition grant to then tax the community 1.6 million.
But the tax, the taxpayers had a lower tax rate.
I understand that, but we still pay a higher taxes.
I would, I'm not, I wouldn't.
Well, my tax bill went up because I had to pay a portion of the 1.6 million dollars. We could have done nothing and just got 1.5 million dollars.
Well, so did my tax bill too.
Right, so your taxes did go up.
So understand that that golden penny was exercised, we discussed that, Casey, starting at a workshop back in February. In fact, it was our last in-person session prior to the pandemic. And there were a number of things that went into play there. And really, some of this dates back to the budget cuts of 2011, which were decimating to our district. Okay, I spent a lot of that session working with our legislators, trying to get that cut to not be as bad as it was. And then in 2013, this district spent a tremendous amount of time working with our legislators to get that restoration, which we didn't actually fully see. So then we came back around to 2015 and 2017. And at that time, in the tax code, there, in the school finance system, there was a thing called ASATAR, okay? Additional State Aid for Tax Production. And what the problem became very clear to legislators is that school districts were relying too heavily on state money there, and they wanted to stop that. And so with House Bill 3, there was a lot of discussion over not exacerbating a problem that they had created in the previous tax compression in 2006. They did not want to create that problem again. And so over the course of six months, six months of budget meetings, okay, that this board had, it was determined that taking that golden penny was a stopgap against running up on having to make drastic cuts after the formula transition grant expired. It was very, very clear by the legislators who set House Bill 3 into effect that they did not want to repeat the mistakes. And if anyone was here in 2011, which the majority of this board was, that was a very difficult time for the school district. And I think this board made a wise decision with the information that they had at hand to take that golden penny. Now, we can discuss if we want to, want to refuse it again. But I think one of the things that we really need to ensure that we have clarified with TEA is that, understand that there are even bills in the session right now that will restrict the ability of the school district to go out for future asks to the voters for those golden pennies, okay? And that they might not even fall within the budget year that we need them to fall. For example, one of the bills is proposing that school districts can only have these elections in November. Well, we start school in August. We need to have that information and that funding in place so that we can have teachers in the classroom when school opens in August. And so while it's worth asking, and I think it's an informative discussion to have, because there's a lot of history here. And we can look at taking that penny back, but understand the risk to that is in two more school years, we could be looking at dramatic layoffs or increasing teacher, increasing classroom sizes. So I would say more, rather than saying we stuck it all on the taxpayers' back, what we did is we put in a stopgap to ensure the best. what we did is we put in a stopgap to ensure the best possible classroom outcome for our students. And we did it at our own ability, our own ability to control that, rather than relying on the state. Because that every two years changes. And even right now, we don't even know what that's going to be. They are very, very likely going to have a special session. And during that time, things get really crazy. And so the, when we have the ability to control our budget and our funding, I think that's better for our taxpayers rather than facing the potential of coming up in August and telling teachers, I'm sorry, we no longer have a position for you, and telling parents, hey, guess what, you're going to have twenty-four kids in your kindergarten classroom.
Well, I appreciate your background on that.
It's, it's pretty important.
Yeah, no, I, I do understand, but the formula transition grant runs out the twenty-four, twenty-five year. So exercising one golden penny this year doesn't provide a stopgap because we have to approve that penny every single year. So getting, getting the fun, funding in four years from now, we would have to approve the golden penny. We vote and sign off on the tax rate every year.
Need some significant clarification from T E A because all of the documentation from T E A is that that fifth golden penny was available to boards only in the twenty twenty tax year. That is the guidance from T E A.
There are eight golden pennies.
I, I know that. The rest of them, though, you have to go out to the voters for the taxes.
I understand that.
And the risk there then becomes the timing also of that election. The timing of that election impacts our budget.
Understood.
Okay, I mean, it's a.
It's, it's not lost to me. I understand you have to go out and have a, a T R E to get access to those pennies. The fifth, the fifth one was unanimous. Currently, the way the law is written, we can vote for it and don't have to go to our T R E for the fifth one. I think we should discuss not exercising the golden penny because I can still get one and a half million dollars and we're not really going to have a big difference.
I think we really need to clarify with T E A that that board approval option is available thereafter. Because I am telling you that the information on T E A's website is that that option is only, was only available in the twenty twenty tax year.
It could be, and that's something we need to keep on the menu to discuss.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, I don't, from everything that's on T E A's website, everything that's on T E A's website on House Bill Three, is that that vote, the, the board approval side of that was only available in tax year twenty twenty. Now, we can certainly get clarification from T E A, but the, all of the documentation that's on T E A's website indicates that after the twenty twenty tax year, that could only happen with the voters. And those elections can only be held.
If it's only going to happen for the voters, don't we have to adjust down our tax rate anyways?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Wouldn't we have to adjust down the tax rate anyways? If, if it was only for one year unanimous vote, and we're having a nine, nine six six four. Is that what you're saying? Or are you saying, are you saying we can vote as a board to access the fifth penny? And then six, seven, and eight, we have to go to the voters, correct?
The, the information on T E A's website seems to indicate that there was only one opportunity
For unanimous vote.
For the board. The, the verbiage is, is unclear, and I think that's something that we can certainly refer back to TASB legal. It does not appear that the board, it does not appear from the way T E A has this setup that the board has the opportunity to continue to approve that golden penny.
So shouldn't we be conservative in our, in our budget then and not act as if we are going to have a tax rate for the M and O side as point nine six six four? And shouldn't we run it as point nine five six four? Because we are not certain. I would think that's a more conservative approach.
It won't change the bottom line. I mean, it's just, like you said, it just changes the source. But it doesn't change our net funding. The net funding stays the same.
I understand. So then why would we just not put point nine five six four? And then, and then just update our formula transition grant line item? Because we're just saying we're not certain we can access the fifth golden penny. So it doesn't make sense for me to put it in the budget.
But after, we, we have access to it from here on out.
That grant is going to go.
We do for this school year, but we have to then approve it in August.
No.
No, you would just approve the nine, not point nine six six four.
As the board for the fifth penny. But we could still get one point five million dollars and not have to access a fifth penny is my point.
Access it, we might not be able to go back and access it again. I mean, that's your, that's the risk.
I understand that, but we're still getting formula transition grant money for the next three years. I think that's a problem we solve down the road.
So let me just tell you like what I'm hearing from people during the legislative session is they are shocked at what the formula transition grant money cost.
Yes.
When they first budgeted for House Bill Three, they thought it was going to be significantly less than it is now. And there is uncertainty still. I mean, they're still meeting whether or not they're going to make changes to the formula transition grant. And we still have another session in twenty-three that they could make changes. So that was another factor and that we, we talked about at length in making the decision to go ahead and access that fifth golden penny.
Well, I understand that.
The low, the low hanging fruit here, Casey, the low hanging fruit for the legislature when they need to save money is to go take that formula transition grant away immediately.
And then we discuss the golden pennies if we need to.
But the problem becomes then also the timing of when that can happen.
I understand that. So you might have one year where you have to cut your budget a little bit somewhere.
Okay, except this was approaching two million dollars. And when you start to, you know.
We're sitting on a general operating fund of unallocated money of about fifty million dollars. If there's one year where we need to access one point five million dollars, I believe we can weather that storm.
That is a possibility as long as the legislature does not go after our fund balance, which is also another potentiality that they're discussing in Austin right now.
There's other ways around.
To, to some degree, but understand that the bills that they're proposing out there, Casey, they, they throw up amendments on this stuff at two o'clock in the morning and in secret meetings that they have, they call them from the floor. They go off and have them in another building. And there's not even any way anyone can go to those meetings, okay? We, we have been here with significant cuts to teacher staff in two thousand eleven. And it wasn't pretty. And it hurt kids in the classroom. And if, if we're looking at, what, thirty-eight dollars a year on the average taxpayer in, in G C I S D to ensure that our kids have teachers in the classroom, I, I think that's a reasonable stopgap.
Versus doing nothing and getting the free money. That's one point, that's one point six million to the community. I don't care how you dice it. It's still one point six million dollars. It's not fiscal responsibility, in my opinion.
Well, I think the biggest responsibility that we have is to the students in the classroom.
We do have the biggest responsibility to the students in the classroom, whereas I made that point last board meeting. My next question for you, Dan, on the teacher positions, we're cutting twelve positions. What, what positions are, what level should I say of teacher positions, high school, middle school, elementary?
High school level and ten of them are elementary.
Is that?
Four at high school.
Oh, four at the high school and eight at the elementary, sorry.
What grade levels at elementary? Do we know?
We use a twenty-two to one staffing ratio in all of our elementary classrooms K through four. And I can get you the list of, I can put that in the board update of the places where we are reducing based on the twenty-two to one ratio.
And can you explain K I D U positions for me?
What?
We have the twenty-five reduction there. What exactly is K I D U?
K I D U is our after-school program.
Okay, gotcha.
Question regarding K I D U, actually. So if I understand right, the thought process there is, and this is from when your presentation was going through, that our K I D U enrollment has gone down this last year. This last year was an interesting year, an outlier year on the bell curve. So how do we look at that if, I hate to use the word, all things get back to normal, because there will be no going back to normal what we used to know. Just like after nine eleven, security changed and IDs and et cetera. Do we participate, do we think or anticipate that we might have to, that twenty-five month number may go to twenty? Because of people going back to more work in person and needing aftercare and so forth?
Yes.
So how, can you give me some content around that number versus twenty versus thirty? How do we? And is that an easy, is that an easy program to add staffing to very quickly? If we need it, if our enrollments go back up?
Well, that's another thing is that hiring the K I D U staff is very difficult. We've had a really difficult time finding staff. And, but if we see that there's a waitlist at a specific campus and we, we, we're going to do, you know, the analysis of looking at what the revenue would be, then we will, if it's going to be an increased revenue source, we would just increase the revenue budget and increase the expenditure budget to add those positions back, that position back in order to meet that waitlist need. If that makes sense.
I want to provide a little context around what you said. It's hard to fill those positions. So as we have career paths our hourly workers that work at the E C D C, it's like a daycare worker. And so we have some people going to college that want those kind of roles, who want to be teachers or who want to run daycares. But it is really hard to find someone who wants to keep children after school for those amount of hours. So it is, it's something that we do have a, a lot of turnover in those positions. It's one of our hardest to fill. But, but we do find really dedicated people who are excited to be around our kids. It just takes us a little bit longer for those jobs.
Yeah, kind of for Dr. Ryan, like we, we had discussed about plans for the fall. You know, like, like Louis said, maybe closer to normal. And something like that, when we let the community know that might have an effect on K I D U, might have an effect on many things. I mean, I just, I just, I just can't think of us not increasing those numbers in K I D U if we go back to close to where we were before. So I don't know if this, I mean.
I don't know that we, I don't know if we'll get back to where we were before, just because a lot of.
Because there was, there was like, there was always like waiting lists on K I D U before, right? I mean.
I mean, there are waiting lists because we have trouble hiring the staff.
Okay.
So yes, there have been waiting lists in the past, but it's, it's very difficult to, to get the staffing. So once we can do that, then we, you know, we certainly allow those students to come.
Did you, I mean, yes, we're reducing that, that budget by twenty-five percent, I mean, twenty-five positions. So it's bringing down our budget, but that's also revenue based, our revenue. So if you, if you add a position, we're not going to add it until we have the revenue from the enrollment.
Exactly.
So it's not a true, I mean, it's literally a, you're one step, you're one day behind and then one day ahead, one day behind, one day ahead. One position ahead or one position below, because you're not going to hire, let someone go, cut that position if we don't have the revenue from the enrollment standpoint, correct?
Exactly. That's, and I, I just couldn't budget for all those vacant positions.
When you're going to.
When I didn't have the revenue to offset it.
Yeah, wait, yeah, because you're going to have those vacant, why, why not just clean up it up?
Yeah.
Because it's an understated, understated line.
And as we go and we see enrollments increasing, then we'll start working on the staffing and we'll amend the budget.
Dan, I just want, so on those, on those twelve positions through attrition, you said four were high school, eight were elementary, so we didn't have any at the middle school level? So that's not broken out by elementary and secondary. That's four of the high school and, okay. So eight, that means less than one per campus for the elementary level. And so, so less than one teacher at the elementary level. And then on the high schools, does that, is that just the two traditional high schools?
Yes, it's two at each high school. And some of the elementaries have zero, but there are elementaries that do have more than one.
Right, okay.
And so it's not just one per campus.
Oh, right. No, no, no. Well, with only eight and eleven campuses, you can't even, yeah, so.
There are some that have more than one. And we've really worked that out. And, you know, Dave's in his first year and he really is working hard with all the elementary principals. And so we're almost to a point where it's, where it needs to be through attrition and people transferring to other campuses. We have an elementary teacher going to high school. So it's just a really busy time in the H R department to manage all of those moving pieces. But we, we're at a very good spot here, still in April, so.
Oh, right, yeah. I mean, we've added, we've added elementary teachers three days before school starts. So bless their hearts. Oh, my gosh. When do we start registering? Start this week? What did I see? When's registration, or kindergarten roundup? What did I say? Something? Okay, yeah, I saw something already flying by that, okay, so very soon. So, okay.
I'd follow up on that, because we're talking about registration, enrollment, positions. Does anybody know off the top of their head when we, what time of year, when we do our demographer report? That talks about our population growth and so forth?
We actually have gotten a draft and leadership team has looked at it. And I think the plan is to bring it in May, June.
Okay, so here in the next couple of months, we're going to hear, because I was like, wait a minute, it's been a few months or a while since we've talked about it, just talking about from enrollment, housing permits, if our, we're still at two point seven kids per household or two point three, just where we're at. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Dan, quick question. The, the payroll budget reduction, was that based off the prior year budget or the prior year or this current year actuals that we're doing that reduction off of?
You mean the one point five percent?
Yep, yeah, one point eight million total.
It's the current budget.
You're, so you're taking the current budget and reducing it off last year's budget? Or you're taking the current budget and basing it off of this year's actuals?
I took, I built the budget for twenty-one, twenty-two, and I took one point five percent of that amount.
Off of what's number? The bud, the prior year, the prior year budget or this year's actual?
No.
That we think it'll be?
This year's, the proposed budget for next year. I built the payroll budget and it's going to cost this amount. I went and did one point five percent of my.
Oh, what you thought our budget was going to be, took it off this year's budget. So what's the percentage from last year's or projected? When I say last year's, I mean this current year we're in. What's the percentage of the app?
I, I didn't, I did not go and do the current year we're in. I think we have in my projection report, I don't remember how much, million, two million, two something million.
You just might providing that later.
The percentage. But looking at nineteen twenty and five years back, it has averaged two point nine three percent every year remaining in the payroll budget.
Yeah, what's that in dollar amounts, like two million, three million?
Don't know that. I can't do the math in my head.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so the next slide just gives you a preliminary revenue budget comparison, a little, in a little bit more detail with those revenue sources broken out. You can see there on line nine is the flood control where I am budgeting one point five million for that. The next slide is the last slide, and it just shows what the impact of the compensation and position adjustments will be on the budget. And this includes all of our revenue. Have it broken out on lines two and three, looking at the payroll expenditure and the non-payroll expenditures. Talked about those detail. And then line five and six are our recapture and TIF payment. That's the TIF payment that is paid into the TIF at the cities of Great Line and Colleyville. And then you see line seven is the total expenditures. And line eight would be the net impact on the budget with no compensation adjustment, a one percent compensation model adjustment, and a two percent compensation adjustment.
Any questions for Dan? Other, further questions?
Questions? So currently, we're potentially budgeting a deficit of almost seven million or eight million dollars.
Yeah.
Is there any way we can sharpen the pencil on some of this and see what we can cut? I just, for me, that's really hard to stomach that we're potentially thinking about passing a, a budget deficit of seven to eight million dollars.
Yes, so that was what my attempt was doing and is looking at our historical expenditure patterns and making those adjustments in the budget. We would have to go and specifically reduce budgets at the department and campus level. In order to do that. in order to do that. With 87% of our budget being payroll, we're not going to get, we're not going to get that in a positive without impacting payroll. I do understand it's a deficit budget. If you historically look back, and I will provide this in this week's board update, we've had a deficit budget probably since 2011 that we've actually adopted. And I think there's been two years that we've actually incurred a loss when the fiscal year ended. So I can provide that information to you. I think that would be good information for you to kind of have historically what, how we have done our budget.
Right. And yeah, when I've done my analysis, that's what I've seen too. So that's why, to me, I think conservatively, we could probably go back and trim some things back because we usually are ending with a surplus. And so when I have an 8 million deficit and then I end with a million surplus, that's really 9 million in my favor. So then my question is, how can we deploy that capital better for our district to meet our students and teachers' needs?
We have, and historically in this district, we have adopted very conservative budgets. And talking with rating agencies over the last 10 years, I mean, that's something that they look at and they understand and they actually have said that has actually helped in looking at our analysis because they know we can, we conservatively budget and then we actually end up better than. And there's also something to, it's spring and we're trying to build a budget that's for students that are coming in February, I mean, in, in the beginning of the school year. We don't even have our tax values yet. I mean, we have to build a budget based on the best information we have at this time.
Right, no, that's a fair point. I think it's a good point. I just think maybe we just try, try to be a little, you know, I can't believe I'm actually saying this as a, you know, conservative fiscal individual, but maybe be a little less conservative on that so we actually know where our money is going a little bit better.
You, you know, it's giving me heart attacks, you know. I mean, I like to have my conservative budget and I understand. And so I, that's why I did the analysis and I wanted to feel comfortable with a number that I felt comfortable with, looking at back our historical spending and making that adjustment in our budget to kind of match our historical spending. But I didn't do the full, I didn't do the full 8%, I did 4%. And I didn't do the full payroll. I did the 1.5%. So.
And when you're doing, sorry to interrupt. When you're doing your budget and you're, are you going back and pulling it off prior year budgets numbers? Or are you pulling off prior year axles? And by prior year, I mean current year axles. You know how you would project it through the year end because a lot of it's going to be fixed. So you could extrapolate it out for the remaining two or three months, you know, of the school year.
The parameters that I made, I did it based on the 2122 projected budget. I did it based on this budget.
Right. I understand that. But when I make a budget personally, I look at what are my axles? And then I project off my axles, my growth percentage from my budget. So what I'm asking is, is that what you're doing for the 2122 budget?
Let me tell you how we build the payroll budget, which is 87% of our budget. So the non-payroll expenditures basically are last year's numbers. Last year's budget, with the exception of the additions that we talked about, 69,000, I think, that's adding to that budget. But when we build our payroll budget, we have, we call it salary negotiations plan. And we basically take every person that's employed right now. So we're, we're taking someone that maybe, we may, we have a retired teacher. Maybe they're leaving, but we're going, we're budgeting for her right now. And possibly if she, when she retires, the teacher coming in is going to be at a lower salary. But that's, that's how we build our budget. We build our budget based on who we currently have here. Then we run the models to add the 1 and 2% and we make adjustments for the positions. So it really is, it is the current year people.
In their actual numbers.
Yes, actual numbers.
Thank you.
Well, and one of the things I'd like to add, and you're asking good questions, Casey, is, you know, is it actual, is it proposed, is it prior years, is it historical? We're at 5 million deficit, 6 million, 7 million deficit. And as we've been, yes, we've been very conservative with our budgets from an agency rating standpoint. We're one of the six highest rated school districts in the state. And one of the things, and Becky helped me out here, HB3, what was it, a year ago, two years ago?
Passed in 2019.
Okay, so we were sitting here trying to do a budget workshop in February. Then we tried to do one in May. Then we tried to do one in June. And literally, they had not, the state had not given us the parameters for our budget to even pass a budget. And I think we did it, Ted, a special meeting in July to pass our budget before August started?
No, we had to pass it, we passed it in June, but literally the law had been signed in place like the week before.
Yeah, so, you know, that's the difficult piece here is like, you know, we talk, you're talking about golden pennies and talking about HB, HB3 and our recapture and our TIF and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You know, we are build, I say we, we pass a budget, we don't propose a budget. Deanne and her staff proposes a budget, works on it, is we are dealing with this budget, actual and proposed, week by week, month by month, that we are trying to use historicals and current. And I, Deanne, I'm so glad you brought up the point because I was going to make it to Casey in terms of, you know, one of the biggest things, 87% is our, is our payroll, i- is our budget. But we may be, have a teacher that retires at Christmas that is a $65,000 teacher. And then we replace her with a two or five-year experience teacher that may come in at 55 to 57,000. So we have a lot of those positions. So that's some of where our, our, where our budget becomes closer to zero versus these larger deficits because of the positioning, retirement, resigning, moving, et cetera, or how many subs we allocate, what we allocate for our substitutes, et cetera. And so, you know, it's just interesting to, I want to make note that we are doing everything we can, at least I believe we have, responsible in the past and here. Because just as Becky said, laws and bills are being proposed that may pass in the next 30, 60, 90 days that affect our budget for the 2122 year. So anyways, thank you, Deanne, for your team and all that you're doing.
Yeah, thanks, Leah. I appreciate that, yeah. And I get it, it's a budget. I mean, it's, it's fluid. I know this isn't concrete.
Thank you.
It's a fluid, it's a fluid process. That's why I'm just trying to understand, ask the questions, make certain we're all on the same page here.
Well, and remember too, we're not passing the budget tonight. And this is a months-long process that started back, you know, December, January. And, and Diane will continue to refine this. And it, it's always tricky, Casey, when we're doing this during a legislative session because the goalposts move constantly down there. And we are assured because of when the census data will come out, they will be having a, a special session this year because they were not going to be able to get the information in time to do the redistricting. And historically speaking, I mean, you just don't know what's going to come up out of a special session. But we still have to open the doors to these schools in August. And if we're able to take that penny off without harming our students because that's, that's our first responsibility is, is our students. If we're able to take that penny off and, and not harm our students, you know, that is certainly something that we can look at. But I, I, I think that too, there, there should be an appreciation for the, the lack of local control that Austin gives to us. And so when we do have the ability to chart our own destiny, I think it's important for us to do that because the more we rely on Austin for our funding, the, the more that has the risk of going away and the less ability we have to deliver the product in the classroom. Because I guarantee you, there are only about four legislators in Austin who care what's happening in GCISD. All the rest of them care about what's happening in their school districts. And it, that's just, that's just the way it is. And we're, we're really fortunate that we have a strong legislative delegation. But even they have to compromise to get the votes that they want for the bills that they're trying to pass. And so again, whenever we have the ability to chart our own destiny, it, it's at, it, it's in response to our taxpayers here. Because when we leave our taxpayers at the whims of Austin, I, I think that doesn't always work out well for them.
I appreciate that. And, you know, at the same time, you know, and what I do for my career, you know, laws are constantly changing as well. We're always making budgets and we're always doing projections as well. So I, I fully appreciate that the numbers and the laws change all the time because that's what happens in my profession as well. So, you know, thank you for that background. Additionally, yeah, you know, I think right now, we do have to consider how we're going to best support our community and support our students. And, you know, that's why I was bringing up the rate. I think it's something we need to consider because if I get a free 1.5 million dollars, I want to take it. Because the precedent that's been set from the last legislation to the HB3 legislation precedent has been they've added golden pennies and reduced copper pennies, which would afford us to keep more money in our pocket at the end of the day. Now that we all, you know, are on the same page, they're not subject to recapture for the golden pennies and we only have to worry about the copper pennies that are, that are subject to recapture. So even if they were to get rid of the formula transition grant and maybe even reduce a golden penny, you know, maybe down to just seven, we still have, you know, two or three bullets in our holster, so to speak, where we could fire and get money if we needed. First, though, you know, you always want to consider your expenses and make certain you're rationing those down where you need to, as best possible.
So understand that those bullets in our holster, those are tax hikes on our community. I mean, that's just what they are. And, and again, I will say that relying on Austin to keep the playing field the same, particularly in a legislative year when we know we're going to have special sessions, is, is a risk when we're, we're opening those doors in August. I mean, it just is. And, and I, I've got 10, 12 years of experience of working with our legislators, Casey. We, we go through this budget every year. And only in the off years do we kind of get to breathe a sigh of relief and know that, hey, we can plan and work on this. I get the same tax bill everybody else here does. Nobody wants to pay more taxes. Also, nobody wants Austin telling us how we run our expenses. And, you know, I, I don't want.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting we tell Austin, you know, how to tell us what to do. Because you can also, you know, you know, no one's suggesting a tax increase overall here. What I'm saying is if you opt, if you do exercise those three golden pennies, you would then on contingent of reducing your INS rate. So what I proposed last time is the same as this time. You would reduce your INS rate, which is exactly what you guys did last year and said it was a tax decrease. So how come when we did that last year, it was a tax decrease? But when I suggest exercising golden pennies, all of a sudden it's a tax increase? When I've been saying the whole time, you also reduce your INS rate. And in fact, you could reduce it more than enough because we've reduced our debt to where 14 millions off the table next are principal and interest. So we can actually reduce it even more.
That is true. This board has reduced the debt. The, the issue then does become though, Casey, if we start slowing down the debt payment, I mean, I think our community's been really clear. They don't like debt and we have paid it off as fast as we possibly can. And if you drop that INS, you'll have to, to put the brakes on paying off the debt.
Right, but to reduce the debt, the way you have to do it is you have to overtax your community to do it because you have to do it through your INS component. And so to do that as your value.
No one's overtaxing anyone.
As your values keep going up and you don't reduce your rate, that's overtaxing the community. We have wiggle room within the INS rate where we can reduce the rate because property values have gone up 43, 50% in the last five or six years. You can actually cut it down and still save the community money and still hit your debt service.
And slow down the rate of the debt payment.
Well, you can go and refi like we just did last, last board meeting. You can refi without actually having to take additional monies and pay down your debt. Just go get a better rate.
And this board actually did both, which I think.
I've also done that as well.
That, that's great, Casey. I'm, I'm just telling you that I appreciate the, the new perspective here. Understand there's a lot of history here. And that when, when, when you don't come to workshops prior to, you know, what's happening here, there is valuable information here. There's valuable history. No one is sitting here going.
Are you suggesting I haven't been to workshops prior to this?
I am suggesting that this board has been doing these kinds of fiscal management for the last 10 years and working cooperatively.
I've been to workshop for the last, more than a year, actually.
And, and working with our legislators to get fiscal policies in place that support our school district. We're outnumbered by Robin Hood districts. We're incredibly fortunate that we have both a senator on the Senate Finance Committee and a representative on the House Appropriations Committee. We have probably a bigger voice than anybody in the entire state as far as the budget and finance for, for a school district, right? I don't know that there's another school district that has legislators on both of those committees. So we're really fortunate here. You also start to talk about the timing. And so when you, if you want to go out and get golden pennies, I mean, that, that is, that is a voter-approved tax ratification election. And the state has been increasingly putting up additional hurdles to even getting that done. I promise you, Casey, if you go out and ask for golden pennies, that ballot is absolutely going to say this is a tax increase. We're required by law to put that on the ballot now.
Right, and same with, with bonds as well. I understand that. I'm actually not suggesting that we go and get those golden pennies. It's just an option. I said you would first cut, cut your expenditures first. However, once Diane provided the calculation, previously had not been done, by the way. Thank you, Dr. Ryan, for getting that for me. I did, I did realize that was the best thing, was actually not to get those three golden pennies because we get the additional formula transition grant money. So it's good to assess all the numbers and run the calculations and run the math to know what's the best thing to do. So I do appreciate y'all getting that for me. Thank you.
Y'all, we're like 50 minutes late in starting our meeting.
I would just, thank you, Mindy. I was just saying, I think this is great dialogue. And I know that one of our major responsibilities is our budget. But this also is something that we can go ahead. We've got kids waiting on us for 50 minutes that we can always have. We have special sessions, we have special or extra meeting times that we can meet and continue this, this, this dialogue. What I would like to say before we go into that is, Deanne, I want to thank you because you lead this direction, this school district in the right direction. We are always looking to be as conservative as we can. What I do want our, our community to understand is that this is not a household budget we're setting. I guarantee you, there's a whole lot more that goes into this budget than we have at our, at our homes. So I want to thank you and your staff for leading us in the direction that you have led us in. We appreciate you very much. So we are going to go on to regular session. It is 7:50. I'm sorry. We are, we are having some technical difficulties. So we are going to take a 10-minute break. And we'll be back here and hopefully ready to go, Kyle, at 8 o'clock. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Kyle. We are back in regular session at 8 o'clock. I appreciate everyone's patience. We did have a workshop with our budget prior to. And then we had some technical difficulties. So we always love those technical difficulties. So thank you very much for being patient with us. And at this time, the Grapevine Colleyville Independent School District Board of Trustees and the Central Administration, we will pause for a moment of silence. We will reflect on the continued successes of our district, the safety and well-being of our students, our dedicated teachers and staff, and our supportive community. Thank you all very much. So now we will have the US and the Texas pledges. And tonight, we are honored to have students from Colleyville Elementary School join us tonight. And I hope this, we're leading into our bedtime, so I apologize to you guys. So you're going to, they're going to join us to lead us in the pledges. Do we have them on? They will proudly represent their school by leading the US pledge, followed by the Texas pledge, and then share their thoughts on how they. and then share their thoughts on how they are progressing towards the portrait of a graduate.
Bracy, do you hear us?
We do hear you.
All right, will you turn on your camera for us? All right, you're you're good to go.
Please join us and stand for the American Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Continue standing for the Texas pledge.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Good evening, Dr. Ryan and Board of Trustees. We are so excited to have you join us at Colleyville Elementary tonight. And we have an amazing group of students that are ready to share with you how they have demonstrated the characteristics of the Portrait of a Graduate this year.
Today, we're going to share how Colleyville Elementary supports the characteristics of a portrait of a graduate. I'm going to speak to you about how students thrive as collaborative workers. In GT Lead, we're given opportunities to work with our classmates on a regular basis. These activities and projects allow us to build relationships, work toward a goal, and improve our teamwork skills. Even with the COVID restrictions this year, remote students have collaborated using WebEx breakout rooms and in-person students have been able to safely work together by social distancing. In this example, we applied the knowledge we learned during our geometric wellness unit to create a giant snowflake for the CES administrator, Shrew Halliday. Six of us created our own part and we put them together to make the final product. I am now working with part of a team because we can share ideas, contribute to a project, different skill sets, and enjoy the process of achieving our goals together.
Diane will be sharing how students at Colleyville Elementary are effective communicators. We effectively communicate by understanding and responding to a variety of audio. For example, a morning show crew of students directs and produces daily announcements that are broadcasted every morning to each classroom as well as the students' families at home. Colleyville Cowboys build relationships, collaborate, and find compromise by working together to solve and to complete rigorous tasks. We also have the ability to envision meaning to two-way discussions whether in person or in a mood by engaging in a conversation through WebEx breakout sessions and we're in communication between students and coaches.
I will be sharing with you how students at CES are learning to be global citizens. This year, at Colleyville Elementary, we participated in many opportunities to support our community. Our PTA, as well as our student council, got creative to find ways that we could still fundraise and engage in our community. This year, students created cards and donated candy for the troops overseas. We also made cards and donated cozy socks for our Sock Out Cancer Event with over 200 pairs of socks and cards provided to local cancer patients. We also collected toys for children in need in our area.
Our Cowboys created Valentine's Day cards for local frontline workers, including police, and fire departments, grocery stores, and more. Colleyville Elementary Student Council organized a food drive during the holidays to support those in need in our community. Our student council promoted World Kindness Day by writing child messages on the sidewalk to promote kindness in our school and the community. We also sold very kind of speak with our first ever Be Kind T-shirt fundraiser and all wore our shirts on the same day to advocate for kindness.
In GT Lead, we are given the freedom to apply our skills, interests, and strengths to the work we do in class. For example, when we analyzed the events of 2024, our time capsule, many of my classmates wanted to make clay icons to represent their ideas, even though that wasn't a part of the original instructions. We also have the freedom to set individual goals, take our and take our learning to many possible directions. This allows us to to own our learning and be responsible for our own achievement. In this example, we are analyzing our favorite sports and games with the depth and complexity icons. I was able to choose my favorite game to explore, research it with my icon set interest me, and create a product of my choice to demonstrate my learning. I like this activity because there were so many options to choose from and it helped me be responsible for my own learning.
In GT Lead, we are given many opportunities to solve real world problems with critical and creative thinking. By analyzing problems from different points of view, we can discover multiple paths to accomplishing our goal. In this example, we designed golf course holes for our Spiro robots to navigate. After setting up obstacles, ramps, and turns and other challenges, we used our problem-solving skills to write codes for our Spiros to successfully move through the course on its own. With trial and error teamwork and a lot of thinking, we were able to complete the challenge and reach our goal. I like this activity because we were able to combine our thinking and solve a challenging problem together while working on our coding skills at the same time.
We are the portrait of a graduate.
Thank you again. I want to send a special thank you to Mrs. Segretti, our school counselor, and Mr. Boykin, our GT Lead teacher, for helping these students create this presentation.
Thank you very much because that is something I was was going to ask you, who else there you wanted to introduce? But before you kids, before y'all go, no one told us your name. So when I say your name, if you'd let us wave your hands so we'll know who you are. So you're all fifth graders, correct? And so we've got Finley Love, Everly Reed, okay, there you go. Reese McGary. There you go. Elliot Janison. Katherine Cooper. And Finley Grantland. There, now we know who who was presenting tonight. Y'all did a wonderful job. Thank you all very much. And thank you for being patient with us. Thank y'all. Night.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Ryan to introduction of the 2.0 lead highlight.
Yes, thank you. As we continue our work toward our strategic plan lead 2.0 to guide our work, each month we highlight a different aspect of the district. And in this portion of the meeting, we show our trustees and our community how the four lead 2.0 goals are impacting our students. And so this month, our highlight is actually athletics. We've had a fantastic athletics year, probably one of the best in the history of the school district. And so we want to be able to talk about those successes this evening. And with us tonight is our Executive Director of Athletics, Mr. Brian Gurley.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Trustees, Dr. Ryan, I can't tell you what a great year we've had so far. Collectively, as a district, our high schools are performing at an outstanding pace right now. This past weekend was incredible and we'll go through all those things as we get there. But, you know, if you remember back to March of 2020, when everything hit and we had to tell kids that that's it, it's over. It was it was tough. It was tough on them. It was tough on their coaches. It was tough on the parents. And they kept asking me, well, can we, will we be able to do one last game? Can we do one last thing? And you know, unfortunately for those kids, for those seniors, they had to learn a really tough lesson in life was that sometimes things happen to you that are out of your control. And you just have to, you have to kind of deal with it. So that kind of sat on me all summer as I'm talking to people and talking to parents. And and we got to thinking about, how can we move forward? How can we do it safely? How can we ensure that our kids are going to have an opportunity to compete again? And that their parents will be able to watch them compete? So that was a big part of our thought process. And through the help with with Dr. Ryan and your your leadership and and all the district leadership, we were able to do that. And it was an exciting year all the way around. But a lot of our programs face different challenges. You know, the indoor sports had one set of issues. The outdoor sports had a different set of issues and things that they had to do. They had to change the way they practiced, change the way kids came in. And there were so many pieces to this that I really thought it was important. And what I've done this evening is I've invited Robin Wallace, who's our head volleyball coach at Grapevine High School. And I want her to just talk with y'all just a little bit about some of the things that they dealt with this year in ensuring that, number one, our kids are safe and that our parents are safe and we're all safe going through this. But yet still, sorry, I hit too many buttons. But yet still, putting a program out there that's obviously extremely competitive. And I'll brag on her real quick. We, Grapevine High School, made its first appearance in the state volleyball tournament this year. And we were really excited and that was a lot of fun this year. And Robin, we we expect to do that again next year. So anyway, Robin Wallace.
I brought for you guys, if you haven't, if you haven't seen it, that is the state semifinals trophy that we got presented with back in December. Of all the times, I never thought I'd be coaching volleyball in December, but yet there I was in 2020 doing that. I should have known, right? If 20, if you're going to do it, you might as well do it in 2020, right? So to talk a little bit about the challenges that we face. I know that for most of you, if you don't know volleyball, we are in offseason right now. We are building toward next year. So last year, when the shutdown happened, it's almost like cut, it's like cut our legs out from underneath us. And my seniors, we did a Zoom call or a WebEx and we talked about, you know, what do you want for next year? And they said they would like to go to state. They didn't say anything about a district championship. And if you know anything about our season, you'll know that's the one trophy that we didn't get this year was a district title. But we did indeed go to state. And these kids this year, thank you so much to all the leadership of our district for allowing us to practice indoors when Tarant County came out in in August and said that we weren't going to be able to practice indoors. Football and cross country, y'all go ahead and y'all have fun outside. But indoor sports, you have to find a way to practice outside. And I remember having a phone call with Dr. Schnouts and I'm like, what are we going to do? I just bought three nets to put in a grass field out by GHS so that we can get our hands on a ball in August when Denton County was not under the same restriction as us in there in our district. So thank you for having the forethought to see that not only is it helping our kids be competitive, but it's also their social emotional growth as well. For a lot of our athletes, the only face-to-face contact they had with other humans outside of their families in August, September, October, was to come to school and to practice. If you know anything about volleyball, you know, there's six people on the court. So we would love love to six-on-six, but this is not the year where we got to six-on-six. At one point in our season, we kind of were blackballed a little bit. My JV got quarantined. Our opponent found out my JV was quarantined. Then they didn't want to play my varsity because nobody wanted to be quarantined. And you you don't want to put another team at risk. So there was a week and a half leading up to our district start where I had my JV was out. My freshman team was out and I had six starters. Well, I had six varsity kids, four starters out. And we opened district at Colleyville Heritage with a team of 12 and without four starters and two other players. During that time, from that point forward, we didn't six-on-six that much. We did a lot of two-on-two and three-on-three. And I had 18 kids, I called them my COVID army this season because I had 18 kids. I had 18 kids and I had the entire gym at GHS with the bleachers pushed in. I had nine kids spread out on one side with their stuff and nine kids spread out on the other side with their stuff. They are not allowed to be close to one another just for contact tracing purposes to try to limit if a kid were to pop positive or be close contact to limit the fallout. And it was a learning game. This season was learn on your feet, be be quick to make an adjustment. And I think my kids, when we talked in the spring, we talked about, you know, nothing is guaranteed and we need to be prepared. And the team that's going to win it this year is going to be the team that is most willing to compete without certain pieces. So everyone needs to be ready and everyone has to compete every practice. And for my kids to step up and do what they did this season, a tremendous effort by them, but would not be there, would not be possible without you guys having the forethought to see how important for their social emotional development, for them to be in person and see one another and to allow them to continue practicing even when it looked scary and we had teams out. You know, it would have been easy to say, and we're not going to do this anymore. So for you guys to have, keep faith and let Amy Taldo, if you don't know her name in this district at this point, you did not do anything. Good for you, I should say, because I was there at one point, I was calling Amy every, you know, every two days, you know, to either report or to check when a kid is coming off quarantine. So I appreciate you guys. I appreciate you guys allowing our kids to compete and play and to have a tremendous season. And you guys are as much a part of this trophy, our entire community. This this was our entire community. The student body coming out and being able to be in the stands with one another and to support. It's it's a testament to the community that we live in. And I'm so grateful to get to be a part of it. And I'm so grateful to get to be here today not to speak to you guys. Thank you for having me. Anything else? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, it it I felt bad for the girls too because going to the state tournament is, you know, you're supposed to bring all four teams together and you have a big venue and it's, you know, you just get that big atmosphere. And unfortunately, this year, that's just not the way it is. But I tell you what, Grapevine did a great job of showing up over there at Capel that night. And if any of you got to come over there, it was a, it was an incredible atmosphere. We played a pretty good team, we will say. They were pretty good. So, so, you know, that just gives you an idea of a lot of the challenges that our coaches faced. And you, you know, you can go on down the line. And so many of our sports said the same things about, how do we, how can we practice differently? How can we do some things that we keep kids safe? And you'll see here, as we, as we start moving forward, we 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 had a lot of success this year. The fall started off, I think I hit the button probably. There we go. So the fall began with cross-country for us. And we got off to a bang right in the beginning, obviously, with the state championship. Rick Miller, if you don't know Rick Miller, he's awesome. And that guy can coach some runners now. And he can motivate those kids to do some things that are amazing. So we won a state championship with our boys team. And then we also had the individual state champion, Walker St. John, ran really well that day and and brought home our gold medal there. You know, it's, it's, we got a proud mom, that's right. And also that weekend, Grapevine Girls finished as a state runner-up, silver medalist. And the Colleyville Heritage Girls also medaled there with a third-place finish. So it's really amazing the amount of respect that Rick Miller has in the coaching community when you talk to different people about the job he's done.
Brian, I'm going to, I'm going to interject on that point right there. Because I want people to understand that when you look at these three podium pieces that we had here, that that's half of the state 5A podium. There, and in fact, out of the six spots, boys, girls, gold, silver medal, this district had four of them because Denton was on there as well. Which tells you the kind of competition that both of those high schools, both the boys and the girls, had to withstand to get to where they were. So just shout out to to all three of those teams for an amazing season.
GCISD cross-country programs get a lot of respect all over the state and it's well-deserved. Our team tennis season then moved along and Grapevine High School was in the by-district round. And Colleyville Heritage was a regional quarterfinalist in our team tennis category. And then there's volleyball season right there, as we already mentioned. Grapevine High School, first first state tournament appearance in school history. Number two will happen in a couple of months, right? There we go. Colleyville Heritage Girls were regional quarterfinalists. And if you don't know, our two schools played each other in the third round of the volleyball playoffs. And if you happened to got to go to that game or see anything, it was a great atmosphere over there at Trinity High School that day. Robin said the kids were there. It was just, it felt like, felt like we were back to doing sports like we all love to do. So that was a lot of fun. Football season, obviously, we had two, both of our schools won regional semifinals. It was an interesting year. I don't think anybody ever thought we'd play on Christmas Eve, but we did. Grapevine played Lubbock Cooper in Sweetwater that day. And then the day after Christmas, Colleyville Heritage played their playoff game against Mansfield Summit. So we had a great football season and both of them were district champs. And our cheer program went to their UIL Spirit competition and they placed second with a silver medal in the game day division of the UIL Spirit Division. So we had a really good fall season. As you can tell, we were really successful. Well, we were successful in every sport that we had going on at that time. So as we got into our winter sports, basketball season was moving along and Colleyville Heritage Girls were a playoff team. The Grapevine Girls were regional quarterfinalists. And the the game I just remember, obviously, is their second-round game against Mansfield Summit. I don't know if you saw the last second shot that that they hit in that game, but it was an incredible play. They went the length of the floor. She kicks it out, the girl hits a three, they win the game. It was just amazing. So that was a lot of fun. And then the Grapevine Boys were also area finalists. And then the Grapevine boys were also area finalists as well, winning their by-district game over Brewer. We got into the swim and dive season and, you know, obviously you can see we took a lot of kids to the state meet. Colleyville Heritage had eight state qualifiers, Grapevine had six. And we were very fortunate that we, uh, we had another state champion. Abby Deveraux was the state dive, class 5A dive champion. And that's her back-to-back titles for her. So very proud of her going down there and bringing home another, uh, gold medal. Just recently, this past weekend, our wrestlers were all at the state wrestling meet. We had three state qualifiers at Colleyville Heritage and Colleyville Heritage had a state champion. Evan Ashley, I think I'm pronouncing that right. Ashley, uh, is a 152 state champion. So congratulations to him. And, and of course, Coach Kriener continues to do a great job with the Grapevine wrestling program. He had six kids and they're really young, his group is really young. And we're, we're expecting some exciting things out of that group. Then we got into soccer season and, and, and I really don't know if I can tell you if I've ever seen a school district with all four of their teams go a minimum of three rounds deep in the playoffs. Grapevine High School boys were regional semifinalists. Obviously, the Grapevine girls was another one of our state tournament participants, playing in the state semifinals against Frisco-Wakeland. And then the Colleyville Heritage boys played in the regional finals. They were a game away from the state tournament as well. And then the Colleyville Heritage girls were regional quarterfinalists. So just so you know, that, that doesn't happen very often that you have that many programs in a, in an ISD and all of them perform that well. So we were really proud of, of how all of them performed this year and how they all played. Exactly. Wakeland was pretty good. Wakeland was really good.
Like you were saying about they lost to a good team, they lost to a good team.
It was a lot of fun, it was a lot of fun. And, and we, we had a lot of fun in all those spring sports and, I mean, uh, winter sports. So kind of finishing things up in the spring now, uh, the golf kids were all out in Lubbock this last week. And if you've been to Lubbock, it could be 17 degrees or it could be 85 degrees. And unfortunately, our poor Grapevine girls caught one of those days where it was really cold on day two. And they performed well, they, they played hard, they tried to do everything they could. It was some challenging situations that day. But, but we had, uh, Grapevine's boys and girls were both regional qualifiers. And the Colleyville Heritage boys were also regional qualifiers. And then Grapevine girls and the Colleyville boys were both district champions as well. So, so our, our golf programs are performing really well. And then of course, recently, just on Saturday, our track programs, we've got several kids going to the state track meet. And that's always a lot of fun. Grapevine had eight regional qualifiers and then has two state qualifiers. And then we also had another great thing happen. We had a regional record broken, Walker St. John in the 1600 meters. And I don't know if you know a lot about what a mile time is, but 4.19 is fast. It is, it is fast. You are, you're moving to run four laps that fast. And he, he, he ran really well that day. He, he ran, as Coach Miller says, he ran his race. And I said, yes, he did. And, and he, he really finished strong and he looked good. The Colleyville Heritage, we had a good showing from Heritage as well. We had 19 total regional qualifiers there and four state qualifiers from Heritage. And Ally Love also set a regional record in the 1600 meters and she ran 503. And I really believe if somebody pushes Ally a little bit, she's gonna go 450 something easily. She wins every race by about 100 yards usually and she crosses the finish line and she just kind of, okay, what's next? And so she's, she's really amazing, she's, she's an amazing. But, but I'm really proud of our track programs and just the number of kids we have out, the success we're having in there. And you know, for track now, you don't go just from the district meet to regional anymore. There's an area meet in between there. So you've got to qualify at different, a couple of different spots where years ago, it used to be you went from district to regional. So now there's another piece in there where you have to qualify. So our kids have done well. And as of right now, as a matter of fact, today, we don't have results, but our tennis kids are at the regional tennis meet in Lubbock. And we've got, Grapevine has a boys double, doubles group there. And Colleyville Heritage has the girls doubles, a mixed doubles and the boys doubles team. So good luck to them, just hadn't heard any results yet back on that. And then finishing things up, we're right in the middle of, you know, uh, baseball and softball are finishing up their years. Colleyville Heritage, as a matter of fact, right now is playing a seeding game against Richland High School for first and second place. So we have a score?
Sixteen to four.
Six, and we're up.
Yes.
Sixteen to four, we're up. Got to make sure. So that means we'll have the district champion for, for girls softball there too. And then baseball, boys, Grapevine and Colleyville Heritage both finish up their games this week. And as of right now, the Grapevine boys are leading the district, playing really well. And Heritage is, is right in there fighting for a playoff spot. So, uh, so it's been a, it's just been a great year where we've been, we've had so much fun going to all these different places and playing all these games. But this is one of the things I get really excited about is where we are with Lone Star Cup. And this, as of right now, they've only updated it through basketball season. So all of our track, I mean, uh, track success, soccer success, all of that's not on there yet. But, and I don't want to say we're really close to Hawn Park right now because I, I don't know some of the other stuff, but I feel really good right now. But you see Grapevine sitting in second and Colleyville Heritage is seventh. And, and again, I just want y'all to know, to have an ISD with two high schools and both of them in the top 10, it's a testament to our kids, our parents, our coaches, you guys, the support you give. So it's just, it's been a fun year and we're not done yet. And I think we're gonna have a lot of, we're gonna have a lot more fun at the state track meet next weekend, May the 7th, is when those kids run. And then of course, baseball and softball playoffs coming up. So really looking forward to it. And again, I can't, I can't, we can't thank you enough for the support that you've given our programs over the years. And, and especially this year, it was really important our kids get back. And, and they've loved it and, and it meant a lot to them. And I know it meant a lot to our parents as well. So thank you for everything you do and we really appreciate it. Does anybody have any questions?
I do, I got.
Yes, sir.
I want to go to Coach Wallace first, then we'll come back to you. Coach Wallace, you talked about the girls and how you learned how you, you were doing six-on-six and then you broke them in threes and twos and nine over here, not. You talked about what they learned and they said they, they didn't even talk about this year, but wanted to make it to state. What did you learn as a coach?
Oh, my gosh.
You've been coaching for a while and here was, you were thrown upside down as well. What did you learn from a coaching experience, leadership of these girls, mentality of them, and even yourself on how to handle and adapt and overcome and become prepared? Talk about that a little bit.
So many things, I will try to be brief, but the list is oh so very long of everything that we learned this year. First and foremost, testament to my kids and also I think just to my program as, um, what we're building over there at Grapevine, is that nothing is given to you. You know, you are gonna have to work and you're gonna have to, we, our mantra in the playoffs was adapt, adapt, adapt. You know, we can adapt to anything. We've adapted this year, we've adapted our practices, we can adapt our defense. And that's how we actually beat volleyball in the playoffs is that we adapted our defense and we changed so that we could win that game, you know, because that's a tough opponent for us. But my kids, what they're taking away from this season is nothing is given to me and I can adapt to anything to get what I want, you know? I'm gonna have to work, but I can adapt, I can change my circumstances. I can't change my circumstances, but I can change my perspective on the circumstances that I have to, to make me a winner in the end, to get what I want. And if I don't get out what I want, a district championship, maybe they didn't really care about that, I really wanted it. But you know, that wasn't something that was on their radar, but it never stopped them from attacking the next opponent. If you watched our playoff run, you know that we played Granberry in the first round and we were down zero, two after the second set. And I, you know, I like went into the huddle and I'm like, okay, go have fun, you know? And I looked at my assistant, I'm like, we, we are gonna lose in the first round. And that, that is crazy to me because I'm, we're the better opponent. But my kids just had this fire inside of them that they wanted to go to state. And that was what they came off the floor for the first time out and they're like, we've got this game. If this goes five, we, we will win. And I think that anybody who watched us play this season knows that if we went into a five-set match, we were gonna come out the winner because my kids were able to adapt. Me personally, as a coach, what I learned is, you know, we don't have to work so hard. Not that we're not working hard, but we, we went a week and a half with no games. And we were able to still produce wins. So when I look at next season, I'm thinking about all the coaches in the state that are gonna continue to go back to the model that we came out of where UIL says that we can play 21 games in three tournaments. But why? Why are we doing that? You know, that's not what's best for kids, that's not what's best for coaches, that's not what's best for families, you know? So we are adapting the way that we model our schedule next year. The way that I model my practices for two days, I'm not gonna push so hard because it doesn't matter. You know, a district title doesn't mean you can't go to state. It doesn't mean that next time we won't win state. You know, it's just the way that we have been able to look at this season and think, what can we do differently that's gonna make us better? You know, I'm a big, I talked to Dr. Ryan. We sit, my kids have touched a ball finally for the offseason last week. Coley can tell you that's the truth, we have not touched a ball all offseason. We just touched a ball for the first time last week. We sit in a classroom on Fridays and we, we're, we're building something bigger. We're building kids, man, we're gonna pump out some kids that are gonna rule the world in 10 years. I promise you, Janie Van Zant's a senior this year, she'll be the CEO of a Fortune 100 company. Like mark my words, she'll be a doctor, leading her own practice, you know? So we're, we're pumping out some leaders, that's what, that's what I do. I build people. And I think that the more that I do this job, especially after this year, if, if those coaches that are going back to the way that they did it in 2017, 2018, 2019, and they think they gotta push so much harder this time, man, they didn't see the lesson. The lesson is get a feel for who your kids are and let them be who they are and take that into your season. My, my, that trophy, that's 18 young ladies who came together as a group of people for a common goal. And I think that if you can produce that, they're the best group of teammates I've ever had. That's what we're growing, we're growing people that know how to work together. And that's a testament to the community, you know, I think that that's what we do here in Grapevine-Colleyville. Does that answer your question?
That more than answers my question. And, and here's, and I'm like, you gotta get, you know how we have the high school football coaches go to the junior highs? You need to get her to go to the junior highs. I'm telling you what, she needs to be a motivational speaker for our district.
That's actually what I want to be when I grow up.
Right, and, and I want to, I want to make a com, I want to make a comment here. People set a goal and a goal is something on paper. But unless you adapt, review and re-advice your process, you're never gonna get there. And just like you were talking about, you know, you were down 0-2 in that set. It reminds me of the film Remember the Titans, when they walk in at halftime and goes, with all due respect, Coach, we are perfect because of practice and the process. And what you also made the comment about, about, hey, it's not about all the hard work on the court or on the wood. It's also being in the classroom and building team, having a break, being able to spend time with their families, not taking all that aw, away from them. So I want you to write that down and, and remember that because like you said, the coaches don't want to go back to that. They're not gonna do well. What a great growing experience for you as a coach.
Absolutely.
To challenge the process and to adapt. So awesome, Coach Wallace.
Thank you.
Awesome, I'm very proud of you and I hope we videotape this and send it out to the rest of our coaches. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And then to Brian. So the Lone Star Cup standings, we sit here, we talk about all of our academic successes. We talk about our financial rating, we talk about everything from that standpoint. The Lone Star Cup standings, I mean, any school would love to have anybody make semifinalists, make it to the state playoffs, win a district. And here we go, we have a team that didn't even win district, but made it to semifinals. How do we as a district communicate this, not only to us as a board and to our coaches, but how do we communicate this to all of our middle schools that are coming up to participate in these programs? And also to our parents within our district as well? Because I want to make sure people understand what this is. Because you know, when you have kids, if I'm not mistaken, if you have kids, uh, we have a 90s, whatever your extracurricular activity participation rate is correlates to your graduation rate. And I think we have a 97% participation rate. And I believe we have a 96 or 97% graduation rate here in this district. And a lot of that has to do with this and the programs that we're building. So how are we communicating this to our middle schools and to our community and, and broadcasting this out?
Yeah, I, that's a great point. And I think we've got to do a better job of talking about this too, to be quite honest. I mean, there's a lot to be proud of right here. And it's, and I do know, I know at Grapevine High School, they talk about it within the high school piece a little bit, but we've got to do a better job of, of spreading that out within the community and within our district too is, not that I want to use the, the people, but they say protect the tradition. You know, I don't want to mention who that is because we won't talk about it. But, but you know, that means something to those kids, you know? And if you start building that culture and you start communicating what we're, what we're shooting for, you get that participation, you get that buy-in, you get those competitive programs. So yeah, that, you're exactly right, we're, we're gonna do a better job of getting that information out too.
And we talk about removing barriers.
Yep.
You know, we, we really talked about that. And when you looked at that list, you saw girls, you saw, because listen, this is the state of Texas and it was all about football. But when you look at that, you saw both girls, sports, boy's sports that were not football. You had tennis, you had volleyball, you had track, you had soccer. And you had girls and boys at both high schools and both adolescents participating at high levels. And that's why I'm like, for these middle school kids, as a father, as an eighth grader that literally just found the love for soccer after she hadn't played for three years and then tried out for the middle school team, she literally called the counselor last week and says, I'm gonna go try to play high school soccer. And I'm like, she wasn't gonna play athletics in high school, you know? And so that's why I'm like, we need to communicate this. So that's something to hang your hat on.
No, well, and, and again, it's a, it's a testament to our coaches and our kids and our community. And it just, it's, it's not just one person that makes this happen right here. It's a, it's a cumulative effort, it's everybody that gets involved. And, and we, you know, Dr. Ryan is so supportive of what we do every day in athletics. And, uh, and we, you know, we couldn't do this without him, man, we're gonna do a better job of that.
Real quick, just mention that I know that this spring, we've been talking about, it's easy to play for your sport, right? But this is being something greater. This isn't about playing for your sport, this is about playing for your community and playing for your school. And I know that this spring, we've talked about that a lot because this is talking, we're talking about band, choir, one-act play, prose and poetry, extemporaneous speaking, this is everything, you know? And so it's about being in it, not just for your sport. It's easy, guys, it's easy to show up and be all about volleyball all the time. But this, this is not just your coaches, this is every academic coach, this is every admin on campus, this is every person on your campus buying into a common goal to win for your community, you know? I think that that, if we can get that message out, that's the message, is that it's about us together as a community pressing forward. I mean, I know that this spring, that's something that we've been talking about with our kids in our spring sports. Hey, because you know, we gotta look at it, we gotta snapshot of it early and we're like, oh, we're in it.
Comment because I forgot about band and film, like up there film and one-acts and our fine arts. I forgot about all that and just because we hadn't talked about it here, but it's part of that. And people need to know that it's part of the Lone Star Cup standings.
Right, and I think that the more we can talk about that, bring back that message of like Brian said, protect the tradition. I know that this spring at Grapevine High School, we have been talking about like, go, go score some, go, go qualify for a Lone Star Cup points, you know? It's, and you may not be the greatest one out there and you may not qualify for state, but if you qualify, that's points for our community, you know? And I think that the more we talk about those things, I think this is gonna be eye-opening for a lot of our kids and in, in not, in all of our academics and athletics.
So I want to finish one thing real quick. Kevin Starnes is, works in my office with me. Kevin is the guy that had to deal with the tickets, the ticketing system. So thank you, Kevin, yes. The, the 50% thing that we all dealt with this year was a challenge at times. And, but I will say, our community was great, they understood, we had a few hiccups here and there. But overall, it went really well and Kevin was a big part of that, so I appreciate what he does. So I want to leave you with this. When we hired Robin Wallace, okay, when, when we interviewed her that day, there was something that happened in that room that, that Mike Alexander said, if we don't hire her as our head volleyball coach, she's gonna coach my secondary. I'm gonna hire her as the football coach here. So that's the type of impression that she made. Y'all can tell that she's got a great deal of energy and thank you, Robin, for being here, I appreciate it, okay? Thank y'all very much.
I think we need to start getting video of her as our spokesperson. If that doesn't energize you, I don't know what does.
Well, it, it does bring about the importance of coaches and the, the impact that coaches have and that they can have. And, and the good news is all across our district, we've got coaches just like Robin who are working so hard to, for the betterment of kids. It also, it also demonstrates how important extracurricular activities are. And the, and the lessons that kids can learn from extracurricular activities. We're gonna have a couple of We're going to have um, a, a couple of other recognitions in just a moment that uh, that really add to that. And so uh, they're really important and especially during the COVID year, um, they were important not only to our kids and to our parents, but to the entire community. So we'll move into the recognitions portion. Uh, the first recognition is to uh, recognize a pair of incredible students who are going to be competing soon in the International Science and Engineering Fair. And hopefully still joining us tonight are two Colville Heritage, two Colville Heritage students. Sonara Chowdhury and Stefan Salisis. Both actually surpassed the State Science and Engineering Fair because of their exceptional work at the Fort Worth Regional Fair. So uh, Sonara and Stefan each placed first in their category and each placed in the top five in the Best of Fair rankings, advancing them directly to the International Fair. Each of their projects are going to be judged virtually in May with finalists and winners being awarded later in May as part of the virtual um, competition. So joining us now are Sonara, Stefan and Colville Heritage Science teacher, Sonya Lockren. Starting with Sonara, who is in first place in the Best of Fair, please let us know what grade you're in and uh, if you could tell us a little bit about your project.
Hello, I'm Sonara and I'm a junior at Colleyville Heritage. Um, my project involved drug delivery systems, which are engineered technologies used for the controlled release of drugs. But the initial burst effect is a common phenomenon with these systems. And it involves a rapid dissolution of the drug from the system's surface. And it can often yield toxic results to the patient. So I used the electro spinning process to make eight of these systems using polyvinyl alcohol and ibuprofen. And I coated half of the systems in Kaidozan, a polysaccharide derived from shellfish. And I then degraded all of the systems to measure the effect of Kaidozan in reducing the initial burst effect. My results indicated that Kaidozan had a statistically significant impact on reducing the initial burst effect. And I hope that the use of Kaidozan in inhibiting the phenomenon can propel the use of these systems in chemotherapy treatments.
Is that all? Man, that's impressive, Sonara. That is impressive. So uh, um, does anybody have a question for Sonara? Because uh, except for, you know?
I wanted to say, who here understood that? And if you, if you say you did, you're lying. Impressive.
So uh, you stay with us, Sonara, and we'll, uh, we'll come back to you in just a moment. How about Stefan, who's the fifth place finisher in the Best of Fair? Same question. So tell us what grade you're in and a little bit about your project.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Um, I'm a junior at Colleyville Heritage High School. Um, my project was about virtual reality meditation. So the focus was to see how reliable uh, virtual reality meditation can be in actually reducing uh, someone's stress and increasing their mindfulness. So this all began when our family bought a new VR headset and my interest in VR was reborn. So while doing some research, uh, I discovered there was this app that was actually designed as a tool to help people meditate. Um, and at that moment I knew it was my project because uh, two years ago when I was a freshman, um, I tried to get into meditation, but I just really couldn't do it because it wasn't like, it was just too, I just didn't have the patience to. But uh, I was still fascinated with this idea of being mentally robust and uh, living life with purpose. Um, and so when I heard this word meditation again, um, I knew it was like my second chance to reach this mental peak. So um, I sent an email out to that company to see if they would be willing to help me with my study. And uh, to my surprise, I actually got a response. Um, and it was actually from the CEO herself. Um, so I worked with her and I got some resources and then I started to uh, create my study around exploring VR as a meditation technique. So I, I also gathered some participants. Uh, I told them the structure of my study. It was like, uh, I was like, hey, guys. Um, you guys have four weeks to try reach, try and reach a goal of eight meditation sessions. Um, you'll just come home to my, uh, you'll, you'll come to my home, meditate for 35 minutes or so, um, and then you'll leave and that's it. Um, I had them take some surveys before their first session and after their last session. Um, and then I measured their heart rate, blood oxygen and blood pressure for each session. Um, and then four weeks of scheduling meditation later, time was up. And so I condensed all of the spreadsheets from every participant into this master table. Um, and then after analyzing that master table, I found that the uh, stress, stress levels on average dropped nearly 20%. Um, and on average, their mindfulness levels increased by 6%. So here there was a clear shift in mood. Um, and in general, the response I got from, from all my participants was overwhelmingly positive. Um, I also got a ton of great feedback. So uh, many people said they wouldn't have been able to meditate in this traditional sense because they get distracted easily or whatever. But VR allowed them to zero in. Um, so I concluded that after directing 95 meditation sessions, um, virtual reality as a meditation practice is very effective and I believe it has the potential to reach a lot more people.
Another impressive uh, project here. So Ms. Lockren, can you join us?
So good evening, Dr. Ryan. Not sure my, my videos, let's see, oh, here it is.
There you are.
Okay.
Hi, Sonya. So um, can you talk about these two students and their projects? And then um, uh, overall, if you could just talk about your, your uh, science fair there that you've begun at Colville Heritage.
Yes. So I've been teaching the research and design class at Colleyville Heritage for about five years. And this year was a very, very difficult year because most of the students in my class are remote. And the science fair has very strict rules about what you can do at school, what you can do at home. So a lot of the students, they actually came up on Saturdays and we had Saturday lab sessions. They could come to the campus and work in the lab setting. And these two students were phenomenal students, right? So we, um, we had about 47 students participate in the fair this year. 30 of them were able to advance to the state competition at Texas A&amp;M, but it was all virtual this year. Uh, and then these two students were um, standouts. They both worked from home, but they were able to design projects that were uh, phenomenal. So the professors at UTA where the regional science fair was, uh, they were very, very impressed. And they didn't win just one or two awards at the fair. They were each uh, recipients of probably four or five awards from different organizations that day.
So um, how long have you done uh, this science fair, Sonya? You've, you've been kind of the driving force behind this science fair. And I would uh, encourage anyone that wants to feel inadequate to go to the next science fair next time and talk to our students. Because you go from, from project to project and you train them not only to do um, uh, the experiments and, and, and work, and the work, but you also uh, uh, work on their verbal skills and how they explain uh, the different projects. And it's just incredibly impressive. Uh, so talk a little bit about uh, how long you've done that and uh, kind of where, where your students are? If you have any success, success stories.
So I have, um, this is my fifth year teaching this class and this class is basically the class that displays the portrait of a graduate. Because they have to be able to do so many things, um, where they're communicating their science findings. They develop their project completely on their own. They go out to the community and they um, discuss their project. They have to defend their project with professors from Texas A&amp;M and UT Arlington. Um, and it's really great to see the kids when they come in in August because they, once they come in in August, they don't have any ideas at all. So they come in not knowing what they want to do and some of them don't even know what categories they're interested in. And they start there to these phenomenal projects um, in February. And every year we're able to have a, a district kind of science um, symposium. So everyone can come out and take a look at it. We didn't get to do it this year with um, the conditions we had. But um, every year the, the students, just to see their growth and I have to remind them where they started to where they are now. And they're, I mean, they're impressed because they forget. They forget how much they've grown. Um, but the students are amazing every single year.
Well, we, uh, we appreciate, we appreciate your work. Did somebody else want to say something there? Okay. Uh, we appreciate your work and that of, of, of our students who are just doing such a tremendous job. Congratulations and we want to say good luck at the international competition. You know, and, and I would just like to say there, Sonya is a special, she's a very special teacher. And we have hundreds of special teachers just like Sonya all across the district too, have worked so hard. And it might be teaching students how to read in early grades or it might be keeping them engaged in middle school. Uh, certainly Sonya has found her uh, niche at what she does at Colville Heritage High School. But uh, our teaching staff is just doing tremendous job to get our students uh, where they are. I also want to say thank you to Tony Zahn, who's our GCISD Director of Science and uh, Dr. James Whitfield, who's our Colville Heritage Principal for their leadership uh, in this work as well. Thank you very much for joining us tonight, uh, both Stefan and uh, Sonara. So uh, thank you very much, Sonya, for joining us and, and explaining as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Next, we'd like to recognize our Fine Arts Department. We talked about athletics just a few minutes ago. And um, I believe that David Zarn is looking down on us with pride at this point. Uh, as we've been named one of the best communities for music education by the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation. Uh, the designation is awarded to districts that demonstrate outstanding achievement and efforts to provide music access and education to all students. GCISD is now a recipient of this honor in seven of the last eight years. Uh, answered detailed questions about funding, graduation requirements, music class participation, instructional time, facilities and support for music programs all across the uh, uh, community. Joining us tonight is our interim director of fine arts and longtime employee and friend at, at, at uh, GCISD is Danny Pareto. Danny, can you give us a, a little bit more information about this honor and just a few of the, of the successes that were important for the district?
Yes, I can. I don't know if I have video or not. I'm, it's what you get for having an old man here trying to use all this particular uh, technology. So I'll just, if you can hear me correct.
Yes, go ahead. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, uh, first of all, for the opportunity. And I, um, first of all, too, is on, stepping this on behalf of Dave Zarn, who's a great friend and a colleague. Uh, he was a, a really, really good friend. As a matter of fact, he did his student teaching with me when I was at Great Vine High School when he was a student. So we go back a long way. He was dedicated, so he's going to be missed here at GCISD. As far as the recognition, the National Association of Music Merchants honors, it's a result of an extensive uh, survey. 60 pages, as a matter of fact, that answers questions regarding community support, funding, facilities, dozens of other uh, facets of music education and pardon me, all the music opportunities that the kids have. And we're really fortunate to have great music educators from K through 12. And I want to really take this moment to give a special thanks to the elementary music teachers. They're the first contact for exposing this music to our kids and it starts with them. And just one example of where this first exposure leads to is the 10 current All-State musicians that we have from GCISD. And there is no honor, higher honor for a Texas high school musician than the All-State honor. And so in appreciation and in honor of the great work of Dave Zarn and all of the GCISD music faculty, I'm proud to be here and representative of all of them. And finally, I'd like to thank you, Dr. Ryan and the GCIS board for all of your continued support. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Danny. Thank you for stepping up and stepping in the gap uh, during the uh, second part of the semester. And, and uh, also again, just like Danny said, congratulations and thank you to all of our music educators throughout GCISD that make our program so great. And that concludes uh, tonight's recognition portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. How impressive, you know, from academics to, to, to band and athletics, just how impressive these kids are. I don't know why we're surprised. We will move on to open forum. And I do know we have several that have signed up for this evening's open forum and hopefully they're still with us. Thank you all for being uh, patient through long workshops and technology problems. Jorge, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Lisa. Next on the agenda is the open forum section of our board meeting. Any person who is not scheduled on the agenda may address the board during open forum by completing the request to speak form and submitting it to the executive director of communications prior to the meeting. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the board is restricted from discussing or taking action on items presented during the open forum if the item is not listed on tonight's agenda. If an I, if an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, board members may respond to comments when the agenda item is considered. In addition, this is not the forum that the district has provided to raise and resolve complaints about individual employees or students. We request that person speaking in open forum on items not on the agenda refrain from raising complaints against such individuals or personally identifying them in any way in their remarks unless it is pursuant to the district's grievance plus policies. Please contact the appropriate administrator to address your comments or concerns. There is a, there is generally a three minute time limit on individual, individual presentations. If groups wish to speak on the same topic, the board may ask that a spokesperson be appointed to speak for the group. The board president may extend additional time at his or her discretion or shorten the allowed time for his speaker to not less than two minutes if the speaking requests are so numerous as to hinder the orderly conduct of the board's meeting on pending business. Anyone wishing to speak either as an individual or as a representative of a group may do so at this time. Our first speaker.
Before you do that, let me, can I say real quick, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Jorge. Um, board procedure is that we can allot it, we have it for a 30-minute um, open forum. We are not going to adhere to the 30-minute because we do have so many, but we are going to adhere to the three minutes. So please do not be offended if you are cut off at that three-minute stage, but due to the fact that we have so many, we are going to uh, stay with that three-minute period. And if you would please make sure you state your name and your address. Thank you, Jorge.
Sure. Our first speaker is me, Marcy Barton. You could state uh, your name and address, please.
Okay, this was, okay, this is Marcy Barton. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Marcy Barton, 4165 Calmont Drive, Great Vine, Texas. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm requesting to make masks optional in our schools. There is no proof masks works. This past winter, we were under a mask mandate and the number of COVID cases and COVID hospital visits skyrocketed. Now that the mandate has been removed, we are seeing record lows of both. In fact, when you look at the states with no mask mandates versus ma- states with mask mandates, the states without mask mandates have fewer cases. So instead of masks working to stop the spread, we are seeing it makes it worse. The size of SARS-CoV- is 1,000% um, wait, uh, is 60 nanometers to 140 nanometers. Medical and non-medical face mask thread diameters range from 55 to 440 micrometers, which is more than 1,000 times larger than the virus SARS II cannot, can easily pass the remas- face mask. There is no reason why we should be putting filthy masks on our children when we know that it is harming them. Studies show that wearing a, a face mask reduces oxygen levels by increasing carbon dioxide levels. The use of masks can also increase the risk of infection and the spread of viral illnesses, impair the immune system and cause a wide range of other physical and psychological issues. My son gets headaches. My daughter says she can't think. I got a staph infection. My nephew passed out in the school while, while wearing a mask. Masks teach fear. Why are we teaching these kids to be scared of a virus with a 99.99 survival rates? These, there are thousands of viruses. Surveys show kids are more scared of COVID than their grandparents. Fear does not stop death. It stops life. Worrying about tomorrow only takes away today's peace. We will never get rid of the germs. That's why God created the best defense, our immune system. We should be teaching how to boost our immune system by eating right, exercising, drinking clean water, and most importantly, having peace. Think of the most, most peaceful people in your life. They are always the healthiest. So why are we making our kids who are still developing are the least likely to get the virus, the least likely to spread the virus? They're, wear a filthy mask that harms them with holes larger than the virus, so it doesn't even protect them. Please make masks optional today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. The next speaker is Ms. Tiffany Chambers. So you could state your name and address, please. Okay, we'll try Mr. Adam Chambers then. Could you state your name and address, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Adam Chambers. I live at 3117 Fox Run Drive in Grapevine. And I have two kids that are still in school, one in the elementary school, one in the middle school. And they both feel fairly, very strongly about not wearing a mask anymore. They're not stupid. They see things around them. They don't see people dying around them. They, they can tell that it's unnecessary. It's unneeded. I personally feel the same way. That basically covers it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. The next speaker is Anne Marie Alard George. Could you state your name and address, please?
Hi there. Can you hear me? Hi, this is Anne Maria, this is Anne Marie George. I live at 3226 Maple Ridge Drive. And I am calling tonight to voice my concerns about the handling of COVID in our schools, specifically about the lack of choice given to parents when it comes to masking our children. I submit to you tonight that the mask mandate is not necessary. And also, I've rearranged my schedule tonight to call in, which was really difficult to do. And I sat here for two hours where you gave everyone else unlimited time. And I think that is very disrespectful to the parents. At any rate, I will continue with my original point, which is that, I'm going to give you a quote. Asymptomatic transmission historically has never been the driver of outbreaks. The driver of outbreaks is always a symptomatic person. Now, I just read you a quote from Dr. Fauci. This is from a White House press briefing, January 29, 2021, this year. Yet I hear continually the justification for masking our children is to prevent asymptomatic spread. And we know much more about transmission and managing risk of this virus now than we did 13 months ago when this nonsense started. Imposing a mask mandate in the short term might have been justifiable when we didn't know better. But at this point, this is a gross overreach. And you all on that board have the ability to unmask my kid. My kid cannot breathe in school. She cannot think in school. I've been waiting here for two hours to talk to you about this. You completely disregarded the petition that hundreds of us signed and said, well, why didn't they call in? This is why we don't call in. Look at how difficult you made it for us. And despite any unrelenting, you know, media campaign inspire fear about this, it is very well documented that a typical flu season is more dangerous to children than COVID-19. So however, you know, you might say, well, it's for the safety of the teachers then. Because we all know that this is, this is not an issue, you know, kids are facing a minimal risk of serious illness here. And so you might say, well, this is for the teachers. But we have three vaccines available to any adult that wants them in the state of Texas. Teachers and administrative staff have been eligible to receive the vaccine since March 3. And those that are concerned have had adequate opportunity to be vaccinated. So it's getting warmer outside, and I would like to see this unnecessary overreach of a mask mandate. And today, I want my child unmasked. I do not want her at home. I want her in school where taxpayers. This is ridiculous. And you know, on top of it, it's very dangerous, as Marcy Barton pointed out. You know, they're not wearing these masks properly. They're breathing in, it's like a Petri dish. How many kids are changing their mask every couple of hours at school? They're not. And you make them leave them on in gym class, for goodness sakes. You make them leave them on outside despite some cryptic way that you guys talk about how you don't. You do. My child is forced to leave her mask on outside at recess if it's getting warmer and warmer outside. This is ridiculous.
Thank you for your statement. My, the next speaker is Sarah Eichenberry. You could state your name and address, please. Ms. Sarah Eichenberry.
Hi, I'm Sarah Eichenberry at 1712 Fox Chase Lane in Grapevine. I'm a concerned parent and want to ask the board to vote to remove the mask requirement now. The vaguely hopeful GCISD update that went out last week is not enough. Give us a date. If our neighboring districts can make this decision, there is no reason why we can't. The Make Masks Voluntary in GCISD Schools Change.org petition that I presented at the March meeting has now been signed by over 900 people. I was able to filter for Grapevine, Colleyville, Ulyss, Hurst, and South Lake signatures when I exported them last Thursday, and that amounted to 525 people. I assume there are probably a significant number of people that weren't counted in the 525 because they just haven't updated their Change.org profile locations. I found 13 that I personally know of that that's the case for. Regardless, there are at least over 500 people in our district that wanted to be heard via this petition that I sent you. Both the TAA's current mask guidelines and the expired state mandates say that the mask requirement does not apply to any person younger than 10 years of age. Why have our children under the age of 10 ever been required to wear masks at school? So you can make the independent decision as a board to cover their faces against TAA and state guidance, but you won't consider making an independent decision to uncover them now that you've been given the power to. Masks have been proven to be ineffective against COVID transmission and to have harmful, long-term effects on our mental and physical health. And right now, it's not the CDC or the TAA causing harm to my children. It is this school district that's responsible for this mask requirement still being in place. Carroll ISD removed the mask requirement for children 10 and under weeks ago. Keller ISD announced that all of their COVID safety protocols will expire July 6. Why hasn't GCISD? I can tell you, it's because the people sitting in those precious elected seats that you're all sitting in have not made the decision to stand up and defend our children who are not at high risk for transmitting or suffering from this virus. Children should have never been burdened with these mask restrictions or told that they could harm someone else by not covering the very place in which they breathe and through which they primarily express themselves. That is harmful indoctrination and manipulation. We need decision makers who look out for the best interests of our children sitting in those board seats. And most of you are not fulfilling that need right now. Everyone who wants to receive the vaccination has had plenty of time to by now. Instead of you looking at all staff when looking at vaccinations, I'd be curious to see if there are any that want it now but haven't received it yet. If there are, put a plan in place. Since our children have never been at risk for this virus, we should all be willing and ready to pull the trigger on lifting this burden off of them as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eichenberry. The next speaker is Ms. Sarah Bates. You could state your name and address, please.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, this is Sarah Bates. My address is 3411 Lingley Hill Lane, Colleyville, Texas. And thank you guys for letting me speak on behalf of my child and all the children in the district. I hear the same thing from teachers in this school board. Social emotional health for our kids. If you truly meant that, you would end this mask mandate tonight. We have three vaccines. Every adult in Texas has a choice to get it. And everyone knows that young children are not affected by this virus. They're not affected, and that's a blessing. What we have done as adults is we push this aside and say, you have to wear a mask, five and six-year-olds. No, you can't play together on the playground, seven and eight-year-olds. Every day, my daughter asks me, Mama, when can we be normal kids again and be happy? See my teacher's smile and see her face. She can't even hug her. Talk about social, emotional child abuse. It's April 26, 2021. It's time to take these masks off our kids. I know what I'll be met with from you guys. The CDC says this and that. But guess what? We did not elect the CDC. We elected you seven to take care of our children. We chose you to make the best decisions for us and for our children. And forcing them to cover their nose and mouth where they breathe for seven hours a day for the past nine months is uncalled for. This has to stop. Defend our children. Take the mask off tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. The next speaker is Ms. Janet Peiser. You could state your name and address, please.
Janet Peiser, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Janet Peiser, 2307 Ridge Lane, Grapevine. If any of you owned a mask or patented stock, sold masks, or received donations from mask companies, and then you required this district to wear masks, it would be a glaring conflict of interest. You're following a corrupt agency that does that exact same thing. CDC members own over 50 patents related to infectious diseases. The CDC Foundation has received over $4 billion donations from the pharmaceutical industry. Members of the CDC personally profit off infectious diseases public clear in their own recommendations. Furthermore, if any of you are extremely fearful or have experienced panic and anxiety regarding COVID, it could prevent you from listening to evidence and ruling without bias. That's like asking someone with a fear of flying to write policy for airline passengers. I hope that's not the case. As you may know, you heard about the Stanford study. The virus is 1,000 times smaller than the thread diameter in any face mask. Face masks are not preventing the spread of COVID. Research has proven this. Also, medical professionals and OSHA-trained are certified to prevent cross-contamination. They apply masks and discard them properly. They know that a used mask is never placed on a clean surface nor is it worn outside the auditorium, down the hall, and throughout the day. To imply that the general public, especially children, are capable of wearing masks without breeding germs and cross-contamination is laughable. And to lead the general public to believe that they can wear a surgical mask or a fabric mask and prevent airborne infection is tragic. Indoctrinating children that wearing a surgical or fabric mask is taking care of others or themselves is a lie. Children are being led to believe that breathing their own human waste is safe and virtuous. Also, in the real world, if an essential employee is unwilling or unable to return to work, they are replaced, period. Doesn't matter why, because employees don't run the company. And GCISD is $180 million business. It's not your role as board members to be medical advisors. Now that the governor of Texas, this county judge, and the TAA's lifted mask mandates, you're assuming a pseudo-medical role not backed by any science. And it's not your place to force children to cover their faces and breathe their own human waste. I'm asking you to follow the neighboring school districts like Keller, Frisco, Argyle, and many others across the state of Texas. If someone wants to wear a mask, let them. But this board needs to stick to creating policies that are based on science, not pseudoscience and hysteria. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ms. Kelsey Rodriguez. You could state your name and address, please.
Hello?
Kelsey, go ahead.
My name is Kelsey Rodriguez, and I live at 513 Woodby Island. I don't really have a point to my speech tonight because I spoke last month, and y'all know how I feel. I just want you to hear me. As passionate as I am about masks being optional, I am more passionate about my children. My husband and I worked really hard so that I could be a stay-at-home mom. And being part of what they do is my job. At the beginning of this year, you took my job away from me when you told me to stay out of the school. This district did, not Corona. McKinney ISD in the next county over let parents in on day one. I know I had a choice to keep my kids virtual, but you know as well as I do that virtual school just doesn't cut it. So I had to pick the lesser of two evils, and I sent them in person. Do you know what that meant for me? That meant not getting to take my kids lunch on their birthdays. It meant not getting to volunteer in their classrooms or go to parties. You know what it is like to not have a relationship with my children's teachers? I don't even know what the inside of their classroom looks like. I would have put on a mask to do all of that. Now it is the end of the year, and the damage is done. It cannot be undone by a picnic at the end of the year. I lost a year of elementary school with my kids because decisions were and continue to be made based on fear. I have obeyed the rules, but my patience is gone. We moved to Colleyville to be part of this district. But if this district keeps me from being a part of my kids' schooling, then I'm out. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. The next speaker is Ginger Penn. Could you state your name and address, please?
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
This is Ginger Penn. I live at 300 Running Bear Court. And I just wanted to make a few points about my children. I have three children that are on GCISD. All three come from traumatic backgrounds. I have one that is burned over 75% of his body, which is part of his face is burned. He has had multiple skin grafts on that face. And in doing so with the skin grafts, he gets infections quite often. Infections which affect his whole life. I, at the very beginning of the year, had asked for a mask exemption and was told no, he couldn't have one. If his face gets infected from the mask, it could result in removing his whole jaw. I made that very clear to you at the very beginning of the school year and was very disappointed when I was told no, and he had to go online. This is a child from a very traumatic background. He has had multiple, multiple schools that he has been in and out of. And he has just barely made any friends in GCISD. So now he's had to go online, not to mention that he has had dyslexia along with many other challenging school issues to overcome. Last year, at the end of the year, he missed out on all of his dyslexia because the tech department refused to fix his iPad after I asked multiple times. So he missed out on quite a bit of his schooling last year. And then to start out this year, not even being able to go in person and have his one-on-one person that he was supposed to have, I was just very disappointed and very disappointed that it was all because of a mask. Also, my middle child, who we have worked really, really hard with him and his immune system to build it, he has had issues because of the mask. As Marcy stated before, these masks are not helping them at all, especially during the warmer days. My child has come home multiple times in tears because he couldn't breathe. He can't even take it off just to take a deep breath outside when he's outside with his friends on the playground. I feel that is absolutely absurd and ridiculous, is not helping his immune system whatsoever. Not to mention my little one who's in pre-K who has to sit in a mask all day long. As well as these three children are going to church, and they are not wearing a mask around other children. So I don't understand why it's such a big deal for them to have to be masked all day long at school when they've been around other children who are not masked.
Thank you, Ms. Penn. The next speaker is Mr. Zach Penn. Could you state your name and address, please?
10300 Running Bear Court. Thank you for your time tonight, board. You've heard several voices this evening have asked you repeatedly to remove the mask mandate. Just read an article today on the CDC website that said, and I quote, "Kids are 10% of the total infection. The transmission is low. Symptoms are mild." As Ginger said earlier, several of the kids at your school district, many of them, if not, have trauma. All three of our children, who we love dearly, were taken out of homes that were in a particular traumatic environment. So the reason why we come to you is we have to be an advocate for our children. We have to speak up on their behalf. We just read an article saying that the transmission rate is not only low, the death rate is even minuscule, comparatively speaking, less than one percent. So after the governor opened up the state a hundred percent, thank you. After the governor opened up the state a hundred percent, the TEA said, "It's the board's opportunity to have the power to vote on the mask mandate." I ask you to follow other schools' lead. Argyle, Frisco, Keller, Melissa, Viter, Joshua, Weatherford, Kamal, Uvalde, down on the border. All of these school districts have managed successfully to remove the mask mandate. We ask you to do the same. Earlier this evening, a board member said, "Adapt, review, and revamp process." Our schools and our children demand better of you. We elected you. We ask you to step up and do the right thing. Over nine hundred people have signed this petition. And if we don't get change, I promise you, change is coming to you. So we ask you, you step up and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Penn. The next speaker is Susan Vaughn. You could state your name and address, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Susan Vaughn. I live at 1809 Prince Meadow Drive in Colleyville. I've had children in GCISD for over twelve years. Our children and their education and their happiness should be at the center of every decision you make. Our children have suffered so much over the last fourteen months, and it's time to end one big aspect of this by making masks optional. Governor Abbott ended the statewide mask mandate on March 10. TEA then gave districts the ability to make their own rules on masks. Masks should absolutely be voluntary. Each student, teacher, and staff member should be allowed to make their own decision. Now that the vaccine is readily available to all who want it, it is time to make masks optional. Our children's mental health has suffered greatly, and you can change this right now. You have robbed them of this personal interaction for too long, and we desperately need to put their mental health as a priority over a disease that has a fatality rate of point one percent. As stated by many others, other school districts and businesses across Texas have made these masks voluntary. I support each individual's right to choose whether or not they need to wear a mask. You have forced those who do not or cannot wear masks to be virtual instruction, and it is time for a change. It is time for masks to be voluntary and to give every student and staff member the choice of wearing a mask. Our children deserve better. They deserve freedom. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. The next speaker is Krista. Could you state your name and address, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Krista Graff, 5804 Quality Hill Road, Colleyville. Please, everyone, open a tab on a web browser and go to my Facebook page at Krista Jensen Graff. That's Krista with a K, then Jensen Graff. I've publicly posted some important documents and information there. I've also sent an email to the board members and the superintendent and assistant superintendent. I'm here to present information on COVID restrictions in our schools. I have literally reams of information, and I'll keep this short and simple. First and foremost, the school board members each took an oath to the constitutions of the United States of America and Texas, and any local laws are null and void if they go against the constitutions. Marbury versus Madison. Further, state, quote, "State law can never reduce or restrict the rights of a US citizen, but it can afford state residents more rights," end quote, according to uscorporate.com. And that also applies to local versus state, from what I've read. In this particular instance, that refers to not restricting the right to life, specifically the right of us all to breathe. Under Texas Criminal Code, Section 3903, official oppression, a public servant acting under color of his office or employment commits an offense if he intentionally subjects another to mistreatment that he knows is unlawful, intentionally denies or impedes another in the exercise or enjoyment of any right, privilege, power, or immunity, knowing his conduct is unlawful, or for the purposes of this section, a public servant acts under color of his office or employment if he acts or purports to act in an official capacity or takes advantage of such actual or purported capacity. Masks are harmful. In requiring the use of them, they are failing at protecting the constitutional right to life of that child. Again, parents, if you haven't yet, go to my Facebook page at Krista Jensen Graff and read the resources. As far as I have read, these board members don't have the right to require the use of medical devices. There have been several court cases on this. Children with AIDS attend school without restriction. And the school board members don't have the authority to require anything that reduces the constitutional rights, such as restricting the right to breathe. The forms they have posted are, first, a legal notice with law references. Second, an affidavit of truth declaring the harms you and your child or children have experienced due to district policy and what you require as remedy. Send in the forms on my Facebook page. Another option is, of course, to pull your child out right now and refuse to bring them back until these requirements are met, are gone. I also included resources for enriching your child's life at home, such as the Well-Educated Heart. And if you're concerned about getting sick, get out in the sun and get some vitamin D because that is the most important thing for COVID. And there are plenty of other resources if you scroll down on my page. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Graff. The next speaker is Tyra Newcomer. You could state your name and address, please.
Tyra Newcomer, 4802 Cranbrook Drive East, Colleyville. As a sixteen-year resident of GCISD with three sons, one at Texas A&amp;M and two at Colleyville Heritage, both are remote learners, I'm very concerned that the detrimental effects the mandatory face mask requirements are having on our children are causing more harm than good. I am urging every board member to consider the following facts. According to the National Institute of Allergy and Infectious Diseases, they state, and I quote, "The overall clinical consequences of COVID-19 are similar to those of severe seasonal influenza, having a case fatality rate of approximately zero point one percent. The majority of deaths were among older and chronically ill individuals, supporting the possibility that the virus may exacerbate existing conditions but rarely causes death itself. It is not clear, however, what the scientific and clinical basis for wearing face masks as protective strategy, given the fact that face masks restrict breathing and increase the risk for respiratory complications, self-contamination, and exacerbation of existing chronic conditions," and disclosed. The WHO, the CDC, and the box of face masks itself indicate that there is no scientific proof that they will prevent the spread of any viruses. Furthermore, not only do face masks restrict breathing, they also create a humid and unsterile environment for bacteria and toxins, toxic germs to grow, resulting in self-contamination. Even more pressing are the psychological implications our children are facing. These dehumanizing face masks have kept kids at home and isolated. Depression, anxiety, loneliness, and suicides are up significantly. CDC data show a twenty-four percent increase in emergency room mental health visits for children ages five to eleven compared to 2019. Among adolescents ages twelve to seventeen, that increase is thirty-one percent. Last summer, the CDC reported that one in four young adults had contemplated suicide in the previous month. The result of this mandatory face mask requirement has been detrimental to the overall physical and mental health of our children. Now that COVID vaccines are available, it seems the mandatory restriction to optional seems to be the next logical and most beneficial step for our children. Thank you.
Ms. Lori Fiore. You could state your name and address.
I'm here tonight. I've been in the school district for twenty-five years now, three in college and one left. He's a sophomore this year. He spent his whole year at home, you know, other than going to football. His life has been extremely lonely. He's field-excluded from everything, and it has made it very unbearable to go out and feel like he's got a social life anymore. Those masks have done nothing but become annoying. People do nothing but touch them the whole time. They're filthy. Everything that everyone has said here tonight, you all, I hope, are listening very clearly. These need to be optional. As our neighboring school districts have shown that they are letting go of all these protocols, some as early as June 1st, we are hoping that you will do the best for our children. I've heard that all night tonight about everything is for our students, for the better of our students. All night long, I heard that from your board, from these board members. They need to really stand by what they're saying and let these masks be optional. I hope that immediately that you make this happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Fiore. The next speaker is Paisley Elliott. You could state your name and address, please.
My name is Paisley Elliott. I live at 555 Dub Creek Place. I am in second grade at Cannon Elementary. I am also the founder and chief ideas officer of Paisley's Palace, a nonprofit I started when I was five years old. I want to empower kids all around the world to become changemakers and peacemakers. I have had the opportunity to do humanitarian projects in four different countries. Just a few weeks ago, I found out I was nominated for the International Children's Peace Prize, basically the kid's version of the Nobel Peace Prize, which is kind of a big deal. I am not even old enough to win this really big award, but that does not stop me from doing big things. This is my first year at Cannon Elementary, and I love it. Want to know one of the most special things about Cannon Elementary? It's the teachers and principal. I used to go to a private school here in Grapevine, and I'm so glad I switched from the first day of virtual classes to my first day in February, when I actually got to go to see the inside of my school. I always felt loved and supported by my teachers. My teachers help kids dream big and encourage me to shine. I hope every teacher at my school knows that they make a huge difference every single day. I know without a doubt that they support me. Two weeks ago, I had a small neighborhood parade to celebrate being nominated for a big award. And do you know what? All my teachers showed up after a long day of school. They all came out to the podium, encouraged me, and reminded me that I can dream bigger and do even more. Wow, my teachers shine bright every single day. My teachers are the reason Cannon Elementary is so great. And I hope you all know they are the reason why GCISD is so great. Thank you so much for letting me speak here today. And I hope my story highlights just one of the many reasons that all the teachers at Cannon Elementary are amazing. Yay, masks!
Thank you, Paisley. The next speaker is Tersa Spencer. You could state your name and address, please.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. My name is Tersa Spencer, and I live at 1309 Laguna Vista Way in Grapevine with my husband and our three children, all of whom attend GCISD schools. I wanted to talk about masks and how they've affected my children this year. My eldest daughter pretty much gave up on attending school halfway a year. She said it was too tiring to walk around at school. She sleeps now more than she ever has. My son had tremendous difficulty academically for the first half of the year. His behavior changed a great deal, and focus and follow-through were definitely issues. We've worked hard to rectify this, but it's still an uphill battle. Additionally, his speech has now changed, and he is slurring. My youngest daughter has now spent more than half of her education without being able to really see her classmates or her teachers. Last month, she told me it had been a year since she'd seen her teacher smile at her. Starting just last week, her teacher recommended that she take daily walks with the school counselor to talk about her anxiety and sadness. I spoke with the counselor today, and she said my daughter was worried about disappointing the people around her. Please understand, young children, especially first graders, rely heavily on visual cues. A smile means a lot. To summarize, my children have been negatively affected academically, physically, and emotionally by a year of masks in our schools. I ask you, as trustees, to carefully consider the negative consequences of the district's current mandatory mask policy, and I urge you to instead allow students to choose for themselves. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Spencer. The next speaker is Lindsay Bums. Could you state your name and address, please?
Thank you. My name is Lindsay Burns. I'm at 1600 Royal Lane in Colleyville. I'm speaking with you today at a time when we are officially almost fourteen months into our encounter with COVID. Throughout this time, we have all had to make huge sacrifices in different ways as we as a society have sought to learn the virus, the risks, treatment, and management of this new thing. However, no one has sacrificed more than our children. Throughout these fourteen months, we've asked them to learn differently, socialize differently, listen differently, and interact with others differently. And may I say, our children have demonstrated outstanding and inspiring resilience. However, that doesn't mean there aren't lasting consequences to the year that we have just had and the adjustments that our children have had to make. For a year, our children, your students, have put others' needs before their own, before their own social, emotional, and mental development through the masking, social distancing, and changing in our learning environment. So for a year, our educational system has asked our students to prioritize others, like high-risk adults, immunocompromised teachers, et cetera, instead of their own wellness and well-being. And for a year, our children, your students, have done so in an inspiring way. Well, fourteen months, so it is now time to go back to prioritizing the students. Now we're here on April 26, 2021. We have three vaccines, known treatments, rapid testing, and data to support risk stratification by age group. After almost fourteen months, it is time for the school board to take a stand and make decisions that are in the number-one best interest of the students' overall educational, social, and emotional growth and development, which is why I'm requesting that your mask mandate be dropped and instead institute masks as optional. There is no reason, after fourteen months, known scientific data on case counts and contagious spread, three vaccines available to the general public, that our students should still be limited and required to wear masks during their seven hours at school. Again, I will state the fact that our children have bravely and resiliently managed these changes to protect different parts of our at-risk communities. You are the school board, and we are the parents. It is time for all of us to get back to prioritizing our number-one passion, the social, emotional, and educational development and growth of our children. It is easy to say that now children should be able to return to a mask-free environment if they so choose. And I'm not even asking you to lead out at this point. Other school boards have done that for you. Now, I'm simply asking that you just follow in the right direction. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Burns. The next speaker is Wayne By. Wayne By. You could state your name and address, please.[1700.38]
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, thank you. This is Wayne By. I'm at 2305 Woodmore in Collyville, Texas. As many others have stated tonight, masks are voluntary in the state of Texas, restaurants, our churches, sports. The only place where our kids don't have freedom is our schools. You know, in previous meetings, all the dialogue and data supports your position. It doesn't talk about the negative impacts. I find it quite hypocritical that this board seems to, you know, say they are looking for the safety of our students and coaches, but we allow wrestling, football, soccer, baseball, which I'm grateful for, by the way. It should be that way. But you can't, you can't make both arguments. That doesn't make sense. The other thing that I would argue is very hypocritical is the attitude of members of this board. Do as I say, not as I do. Members of this board have been seen without masks multiple times, including Becky and Mindy. I'm asking everybody to end the madness. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. By. The next speaker is Kelly Miller. You could state your name and address, please.
Yes, this is Kelly Miller. My address is 6820 Ballbrook Court, Collyville. I have two high-school-age children. My background is education, is an elementary school teacher and counselor. I hope we can all agree that we are here for the students. The students come first, and they are our first priority. What's in the students' best interest should be your main focus and top priority. You all need to do what's right and what's in the best interest of our children, and make masks a choice for each person, all students and teachers. This is about the health and well-being of our children, social, emotional, health and development, their mental health, and their academic and educational success and progress. You have harmed them developmentally in all of those areas. Every human uses facial expression for social cues and for communication. A smile speaks volumes and communicates happiness, kindness, friendliness, acceptance, joy, inclusion. You've taken all of that away from both teachers and students. You've all heard the saying that a smile goes a long way. A smile can make someone's day. It can literally change someone's entire experience. Can you imagine how the smile from a teacher, from a classroom, classmate, can make a nervous child, or shy child, or self-conscious child feel? A smile makes a positive impact and can make someone feel like they belong. And that goes for the teachers as well. Teachers and students need to see each other's faces. Their expressions of feelings are not being hidden behind, do not need to be hidden behind unnecessary masks. Teachers need to be able to read how a student is feeling. Does the student understand what's being taught? Is there confusion? Peers need to relate to one another through expression. Again, all of that is being hidden and suppressed because of masks that you're forcing them to wear. Masks don't work, and they cause harm. But if we consider the premise that y'all are enforcing and must believe that masks do work, then if masks work, that's exactly why they should be a choice for all. If they work, then those who wear them are safe. No need to force every GCISD student and teacher to wear them. You have taken the freedom away from parents to make that choice for their children. You six who don't even want to discuss making masks a choice do not know these children better than their own parents. You absolutely do not know what's best for them. Their parents know what is best for them, and it's their right to choose what is best. Every parent should have the freedom to make the right choice for their family, and six of you have taken that freedom away, and every single parent in this entire school district. Masks are unhealthy. They're unsanitary. They carry germs. Just like any piece of clothing, they're covered with germs. Kids chew on them. They share them. They drop them. They step on them. They wipe things with them, and then they cover their faces with them. With your unnecessary and unhealthy mask mandate, you've conditioned this generation to believe they're selfish for not wearing them, and you've conditioned this generation of students to believe they're safer wearing them, walking around all day, every day, with a dirty mask over their mouths and noses. God created us to breathe the fresh air and uniquely created us antibodies to freely take in oxygen. It's unnatural to hide the faces of these beautiful children and make them feel...
Thank you, Ms. Miller. The next speaker is Mark Tangler. Mark, could you state your name and address, please?
Yes, good evening. This is Mark Tangler. My address is 2709 High Grove Court, Collyville. And thank you for the board for letting us speak this evening. I think there's been some tremendous speakers throughout the evening, and appreciate the time you've given us. We have two children over at OC Taylor, and during that time, after school was opened back up and they returned, their learning experience was compromised, and they have since returned to homeschooling. I would like to focus on the fact of the word mandatory. And with the school board making it mandatory that our children be in masks, there must be a mandate from the state governor or higher, which there is not, or there must be very strong scientific proof, which, as many have stated, there are not. The best analogy that I heard about the usefulness of a mask, it's like putting up a chain-link fence in your backyard to keep the mosquitoes out. It will not help. They go right through it. And with that, I went to your own program listed on your website and mentioned earlier today of the LEEDs 2.0, and the four goals of LEEDs 2.0. Each one is violated by the mask mandate. And so with that, and as it's been alluded to, I would ask that the board members that believe that a mandatory mask mandate is justified, it is not justified. It's actually criminal. And I would request your resignation before casting such a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tangler. The next speaker is Mr. David Halberson. David, you could state your name and address, please?
Yeah, this is, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, this is David Halberson. I live at 2810 Oak Forest Drive, Grapevine, Texas. And I had two, or pardon me, three children go through the Grapevine-Collyville school system. Last one graduated in 2016. And I call on you today because I'm looking at the documentation for the mask mandate being lifted, first of all, by Governor Abbott on March 2nd, second of all, by Governor, by Glenn Whitley on March 2nd. And then I look at the Public Health Guidance dated, I believe, March 25th for the TEA, which, in the section for mitigating practices for COVID-19 operational considerations down below. One of the final pieces in schools must comply with the following requirements, and the last bullet point says, "The governing board of a school system may modify or eliminate by formal action the above mask-related requirements." So at this point, with a 900-person petition in your hands, and the calls that you have no doubt had in meetings before I've spoken, and meetings before tonight, and all of the speakers tonight, in a majority, speaking to a board of seven elected officials, I would respectfully request that you give certain great consideration to the bulk of the speakers tonight in allowing, in voting to make masks voluntary for all members, who are all participants and stakeholders in the schools, especially the students, and allowing the parents to be back in the classrooms with their students. These things are things that we elect you to do, and as an independent school board, you have the authority under the TEA guidelines to go ahead and complete the, and go ahead and vote to open the, open this process up. So that's my, I've served on the campus excellence committees on both Chisholm, or Cross Timbers, and also on Timberline Elementary, also the District Excellence Committee. I was a Dads Club president with Jorge for a couple of years. And so we did a lot. And so I think I have an authority to be able to speak to these things, and I'm asking you, all seven of you, to vote immediately. I don't want to wait till May, till the end of school, to vote immediately to rescind any mask mandate in the GCISD. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, David. The next speaker is Stephanie Teder. You could state your name and address, please. Stephanie?
Hi there. Stephanie Teder, 7907 Jefferson Circle in Collyville. Thank you so much for your time and this opportunity to speak to you all. High school is a great place for learning, preparing for college, having great teachers that go above and beyond. Mentors, AP classes, friends, practice, football games, drill team, ROTC, fun times, friends, prom, graduation parties, and ultimately graduation. These are what the memories of high school should be like, and hopefully many of you have these great memories. But the memories of our current high schoolers are loneliness, sadness, vacant hallways, sitting alone behind plexiglass in the cafeteria, having a QR code scanned for contact tracing, a classroom with only one other student in it all the way across the room. There's no chatter. There's no fist bumps. You log on while you actually could be sitting in your classroom just so you can see what is presented on the whiteboard. There's headaches and there's fatigue at the end of the day because you're breathing in your own carbon dioxide while wearing a mask all day. When will it end? We move specifically to GCISD for the great schools. I have two children that graduated from Grapevine High and just recently graduated from Texas A&amp;M and Louisiana Tech. I now have a current high schooler at Grapevine High School. I'm the medical device rep in oncology, and I see how science has played a very important role this past year. I could quote a lot of stats and data, but I'm here to ask you to do better. As parents, we aren't looking for you to figure out COVID or what comes next. We've all learned that's constantly changing. But as elected school board officials, we expect you to set our kids up for success, not failure. And lately, we're failing our children. We expect you to do better. Today, you have an opportunity to fix the mental health of our children by voting to make masks optional and stop dehumanizing our children. I am sure most of you have seen the statistics and increased rates of suicide during these times. I can guarantee you it is real, and making these kids wear masks is affecting them greater than you will ever know. If you believed masks worked, you would have a biohazard waste can collecting these masks several times a day. Do better. Go to bed tonight and know that you did the right thing for a child today. You can make a difference in these kids' lives if you will step up and do the right thing. I am looking at every one of you. My ask of all of you is buck the system, pivot and adapt. Take a vote tonight. Make us proud to be in GCISD. Make amazing school memories for our children. Make our students' well-being a priority. Make masks optional. Changing your behavior tonight will be very difficult. Maybe you don't want to go against the other board members, but you all were elected to represent our children. You've humbly requested my vote for reelection. I am humbly requesting your vote to make masks optional. You won't need hashtag count on your leadership, your stewardship, and your excellence. I need you to show me yours. I am counting on all of you, Jorge, Lisa, Coley, Casey, Louis, Mindy, and Becky, to do this. Thank you so much for this opportunity, and thank you for making this vote for our children. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Stephanie. The next speaker is Brittany Pollock. Brittany, you state your name and address, please?
Hi, my name is Brittany Pollock. I'm at 5705 Ponderosa Street, Collyville. I'm a mom to a Grapevine High School student and a substitute teacher in GCISD. I'm asking the board to make masks-wearing a personal choice in our schools for students, teachers, and staff. It's time to remove the masks, the plexiglass, and the social distancing. When all of this started, we didn't know a lot about this disease and what would work and what would not work, and what we could do to stop it. So you put in protocols to hopefully protect the kids and teachers. But now, now we know facts. We know the data, and it's simply time to begin the process of undoing all the psychological damage we've done to our children. I'm sure at first this was unintentional harm, but now that we know better, we need to do better. Now that we know the facts, continuing this behavior has crossed to abuse. If it makes people feel better, then they've had plenty of time and opportunity to get vaccinated. As the numbers of childhood suicides and attempted suicides continues to skyrocket, we must get back to serving our students and staff in the very best way possible, and that starts by removing the mask mandate in GCISD schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Brittany. The next speaker is Channing Borack. Channing, could you state your name and address, please?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Channing Baracki, 5401 Sycamore Court, Collyville. Thank you for hearing us this evening. As a parent of both an elementary and a middle school student in GCISD, I would urge you to allow for choice when it comes to a mask. If a parent is concerned with their child's safety, they have the option to keep them learning virtually. They have a choice. If they want to have their child attend in person and wear a mask, they have a choice. Parents who have come to a very well-informed conclusion that they do not want their child masked have no choice. We now have the research that we didn't have in the fall. We can safely send kids to school without a mask. Please make it a parental choice to have a child masked or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Channing. The next speaker is Sherri Snyder. Sherri Snyder, so you could state your name and address, please?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, great. My name is Sherri Snyder, and I'm at 3024 Hillcrest Court in Grapevine. I appreciate your time tonight. I want to share a few scientific facts. I think a lot of people have gone over a lot of this, but there may be some that has not yet been said. So I want to go over just some things that, I want to start with the disposable masks mask box that states, "This does not provide any protection against COVID-19." I think we can start there because that is a pretty bold statement coming from the source of what we are talking about tonight. The second comment I want to make is a CDC statement that says that non-medical masks won't prevent you from, won't prevent you from getting COVID-19, but they may prevent others from your respiratory droplets, which may slow the spread in public places. I think this is an interesting fact considering that now we have treatments, we have therapeutics, we have vaccines, but yet we are still making mandatory mask mandates that revolve around the idea that we may slow the spread. I want to secondly cite an article that was done in November of 2020 by Dr. Jim Meehan that published an evidence-based scientific analysis of why masks are ineffective, unnecessary, and harmful. According to this study, majority of the population is at a very low risk to almost no risk of severe or lethal the disease from COVID-19. Children are at an extraordinarily low risk of dying from COVID-19. And then based on the CDC-published data, 99.9981.815% of children that contract COVID survive. I also want to cite that he says in the study that transmission of SARS-CoV-2 among children in school and daycares is very rare. I think it is also worth point-making that masks worn properly are well-documented to cause, I'm sorry, cause harm to their wearers. Masks worn improperly, reused, or contaminated are dangerous. And I also want to cite a source from Health Canada where they published a warning that disposable masks contain an asbestos-like substance associated with early pulmonary toxicity. I find that interesting considering that the children that did the pledge, the little presentation at the beginning of this whole evening, were wearing those masks. And those masks contain graphene particles that were, that if inhaled, caused severe lung damage and possible long-term health effects. I have also heard doctors speak about the fact that these masks, these medical masks, can cause lung cancer. I think that's something worth looking into. Number five, I want to make a point that masks are a Petri dish experiment. Dr. Russell Blaylock, MD, states that the excelled viruses will not be able to escape and will concentrate in the nasal passages, enter the olfactory nerves, and travel into the brain. I want to end this with the point that, to pull this all together, several studies have found problems related to things such as headaches, increased airway resistance.
Thank you, Sherri. The next and last speaker is Kamala Perez. Kamala, could you state your name and address, please?
Hi, my name is Kamala Perez, and my address is 316 Breck Parkway North, Collyville. And as you know, it's a late night. You guys have been there for a long time, so I appreciate you listening to all of us. But as you can tell, there's a lot of women on here calling, and even some dads. So we're all really upset about this mask deal and not giving us the option to allow our children to go to school with or without a mask. I work in a clinical setting. I actually work as a dental hygienist, and we have to wear two masks. I refused to work because of that. I was getting severely sick from doing that, and these kids are having headaches. I mean, you've heard it all. I'm not going to repeat it. It's been a long night. But the mask, once you touch them, you have to throw them in the trash. Anytime I touch my face mask, it goes in the trash. That's not happening. So there's really no point in wearing them. The kids, when you go up to the school, I challenge all seven of you just to go to the schools. Go look at the kids. I have a 27, a 24, and now I have a 15-year-old at Collyville Heritage, and it's very depressing. Kids aren't smiling. They're not laughing. They're not joking around. It's pretty depressing. So we are begging you, every parent that called tonight is begging you to vote tonight to lift this mandate that you guys have in policy. And one thing, it doesn't matter what you say, it's what you do. And if you really care about these kids, you'll vote tonight to end this so they can start living, so they can start smiling and laughing. And the teachers want to do it as well. We all want to start living again. Thank you for your time, and you'll have a nice evening.
Jorge?
Thank you, Ms. Perez.
Jorge, we had someone who had, and maybe Kyle, do you see Tiffany Chambers on? She had a difficult time trying to connect. She had a difficult time trying to connect and she let one of the trustees know that she's having a hard time connecting. Do you see her on?
Hello?
Can you hear us, uh, Tiffany? Yes, can you state your name and address, please?
Tiffany Chambers, 3117 Fox Run Drive, Grapevine, Texas. I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak for my kids' health and well-being. First, I would like to ask that you make masks optional. Parents that don't feel, parents that don't feel safe have a choice to do online and if they'd rather be in person, their kids can choose to wear a mask. Where's my choice? My children are asking if we can homeschool again because they say they can't breathe in a mask. We used to homeschool until we moved to the school district and it was great the first year that they were here. They loved it. Now they absolutely hate it and want to go back to homeschooling, which I may have to do if this mask mandate continues. Masks don't work for this. If you look at all the studies and evidence shown prior to March 2020, you will find they don't slow down or prevent the spread of this illness. I'm tired of my kids breathing in this disgusting bacterial mess building up in their masks. There isn't a mask mandate and yet are, we are still choosing to mandate our kids to wear masks. I don't understand this, especially with the vaccines being available. My daughter has ADHD and kids like her can't have distractions. Her hate for wearing a mask is a major distraction. She tells me all the time she can't breathe and this year she is developing severe anxiety and I have no doubt it is from wearing a mask. She is too nervous to ask her teachers to have a mask break as they get so annoyed when she does this and so she does not ask anymore because she wants to be a rule follower. She is constantly stressed out at school with, because they are constantly making sure that her mask is covering her nose and she gets so worried that the mask is not going to cover her nose for every single moment she is there. Please take this mask mandate away as other schools have done. Parents should have a choice in whether their child wears a mask or not. I don't even get to be excited to go to my kindergartner's end of year celebration as we have to wear a mask even though it's outside. Some of us really can't wear masks for psychological reasons and yet we are being forced to compromise our mental health. Please, please make masks optional. Please do it now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chambers, and that concludes the list.
We've got one more.
Oh, I'm here.
I think we skipped one. Let me look real quick.
Who's that?
Well, sorry. I believe, I believe you accidentally skipped him. Jeff, uh, George, is he on there, Kyle?
I see Mr. George on there, but his device does not be connected all the way. We cannot unmute him.
I think he spoke, but his wife did not.
His, his wife spoke because it went, it went, um, his wife and then him and then, so I know his wife spoke.
Okay.
Can I mute him?
Can I unmute him? Let's see if his, his wife, Anne Marie?
Yeah, they have the same address, yes.
If you can maybe connect on that device. If you can hear us, Jeff, if you can maybe connect, um, use Anne Marie's, we can unmute you on that one. I'm going to try to unmute Anne Marie if that's okay.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Jeff, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
There we go.
Great.
Okay.
Go ahead, do you state your name and address, please?
Jeff George, 3226 Maple Ridge Drive in Grapevine. And, oh, I'll, I'll keep it really brief. Um, the, the previous speakers have really made all of the key points and I'll, I'll say this, though, I have no doubt that the board members who voted in favor of, of a mask mandate did so with the belief that they were doing the right thing for our kids, for our teachers, for our community. However, I challenge them to do a little bit of their own homework. Um, I've spoken to some board members about this individually and it's easy to just think, well, you know, what could it hurt? We might save some lives, you know, masks are no big deal, but the science on masks has long been settled. Um, we've known for years that a little piece of cloth doesn't stop a respiratory virus. Um, we've known that there can be harmful side effects, but, um, what I would challenge each of the board members to do is do a little bit of research. If you haven't read a, a research paper on the land set or, um, a pre-printed Med Archive and just have skimmed mainstream media, you know nothing about this issue and you're not qualified to mandate something on our children. Specifically, when, um, I was talking to a board member about this and they were talking about the decision-making process and the mask mandate, one of them said, well, we were going with the, the guidance from Monica Gandhi and I'm familiar with who Dr. Monica Gandhi is. She published a study last year about, um, how, it was titled specifically Decrease in Hospitalizations After Mask Mandates in 1,083 U.S. Counties. And it went on to detail how magically after imposing a mask mandate, all of a sudden cases went down. Well, that study's since been withdrawn because when you didn't use a cherry pick sample of time, there was no benefit whatsoever. There's been exactly one randomized control trial done on the efficacy of masks in preventing the spread of COVID-19, was done in Norway, um, and it showed no statistically significant difference. And so if, as board members, you want to place a mandate on our children with unknown risk and unknown harms, it is absolutely imperative that you feel confident that this is a positive risk reward for our kids and individuals and our community as a whole. And an honest person could not say that. Someone who has studied the facts would not say, yes, it makes sense to have kids running around in recess as temperatures soar. We're getting into the, the spring and summer months, it's going to get hot. In other words, all of these issues are going to get worse. And so like the other speakers, um, we demand that you, we don't want to wait till next year, we don't want to wait till May, we don't want to wait till August. You guys need to vote on this tonight and make the right decision for our kids and our families. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George. Any other speakers?
Sorry, that's all. Casey, any others? Okay. That's it. Thank you, Jorge. Thank you, Kyle. That is the, um, end of our open forum. We'll move on to reports of superintendent. You know, I would like to go on before Dr. Ryan, before we go on to the reports of superintendent. I don't know if there's a misunderstanding and the parents who all spoke tonight, um, want to let them also know that there is nothing on the agenda for a vote this evening. So I did not, um, I know several of them made statements thinking that there may be a vote tonight, but there is nothing on the agenda for a vote. So with that, we will move on to item A, health update for the 2020-2021 school year. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, this, uh, it's this point in the meeting where we do hear from our Director of Health Services, Amy Taldo. I do see Amy there. Amy, um, would you please go ahead and give us this month's update, please?
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Ryan. Um, as always, we'll go through the metrics of Tarrant County and we'll start with the positivity rate. Um, ideally, it needs to be less than 5%. In this month, month, it is holding steady at 6%. Metric two and metric five again go together. The rate of cases reported at less than 2,000 per week and then metric five is four weeks of stable or declining counts. And again, we continue to see stable, um, not necessarily declining counts and we definitely are seeing, um, less than 2,000 a week. In April, um, we've seen 1,300, 1,200 and 1,100, um, over the last three weeks, um, respectively. Metric three is COVID-like illness. And again, it is holding steady, um, this month at 2% of, um, what they're seeing in the emergency room is COVID-like illness. Metric four has to do with, um, the hospital bed usage and it needs to be below 10% and this month it is sitting at 3%. So again, the metrics are looking, um, very well. The health clinic is picking up. Since we've opened it up to any GCISD students and staff, um, we're definitely seeing an uptick and being able to test people out of quarantine at day seven. And so the past three weeks, we have actually, um, had a record number of tests that we've been doing over at the testing center, um, getting kids, uh, back, um, back to school. And, uh, we're seeing a few positive cases through the testing center and definitely some other positive cases have come through, um, contact tracing, um, throughout this month. And we will continue to be doing that testing, um, and looking at, you know, what we need to do for, uh, the summer to support summer school. The vaccines, according to the statistics from Tarrant County, um, it was last reported of April 21st and the number of vaccination rate of residents with at least one dose is, um, about 26% of Tarrant County. And the number of, uh, residents and/or fully vaccinated, and again, that's two doses, for Tarrant County is 17%. And so when we look at the vaccination rate of GCISD staff, uh, we're looking at, um, 32% have one dose. So GCSD staff, there's 630 staff that have at least one dose of the vaccine and, uh, we have 29% of, uh, staff that have been fully vaccinated, meaning they have had both doses or some received the one dose of J&amp;J and are now two weeks past, um, that last dose and are considered fully vaccinated. And that is the health update and I will take any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Amy. Does anyone have any questions for her tonight?
Got a few questions.
Casey?
Hey, Amy, how you doing?
Good.
Uh, have we, um, are there any additional barriers that we need to identify for getting our teachers, uh, vaccinated within the school system?
Um, we have had, um, we have had a, a, a staff clinic. Um, I'm trying to remember the dates off the top of my head. Um, and they offered, one of the pharmacists, local pharmacist, offered, um, vaccines for the staff. And so we had a clinic, um, at, at Colleyville Middle School and then we had the first dose and then of course, a couple of weeks later, we had the second dose for those staff members. Um, that pharmacist has generally offered generously offered to, um, prioritize any teachers that are welcome. Um, Tarrant County is now opening it up to anyone, um, that is interested. And then, um, also, uh, Grapevine Drug has also offered, um, vaccines to anyone, uh, 16 and older. So they have the Pfizer and are trying to prioritize students.
And have we worked with the local pharmacies like CVS and Walgreens within the area whenever they have any, uh, vaccines that are about to, um, expire and they need to use them? Have we, um, formed relationships with them to where we can get a call, we can get an email and we can blast it out to, uh, the teachers and the community, uh, to let them go get vaccines?
Um, we did receive a call, I don't remember which pharmacy it was, and they said, we've got some last minute, um, I don't remember which, uh, vaccine it was. And we did, we do try to send out as many opportunities as possible, um, to the staff. I've not, um, had, I've not started relationships specifically with CVSs and Walgreens and the bigger corporations. It seems the smaller pharmacies are the ones that are a little bit more, um, willing to work with us.
Okay. And in your professional opinion, what are the hurdles you think we need to meet as a district to, uh, remove, uh, mask mandates and make them optional?
Well, that is a great question and, um, I think as it was stated in the communication from Dr. Ryan, that, you know, we're looking into next year and we're looking at, um, some of the things that are in place now, uh, you know, we're hoping that that will not need to be in place next year. And that, that certainly is my hope. Um, and so I just think right now, we have to go back to my original goal, which has always been safe, in-person learning for students and healthy teachers to teach them. And that has been what has driven me and looking at what we need to do is safe in-person learning and looking at the three cornerstones of watch your distance, wear your mask and wash your hands. And when we look at the percentage of in-person learners in the schools going up and being very high in certain schools, we're looking at the distance not being as feasible as it once was. And so therefore we need to lean on our other cornerstones, um, until we've got some other mitigation efforts in place. Um, vaccine for younger children and antiviral, all of these things are in works, um, they're just not quite there yet. And I think we're getting there, we're just not there yet. And so safe in-person learning and healthy teachers is, um, is the goal.
Thank you. Are you familiar with the recent study that came out basically saying that social distancing doesn't necessarily work? Six feet to 60 feet doesn't really matter. So that may be one thing we need to consider about taking off the table.
Well, yeah, that's something that I can, um, look at and I would love to read through that. There's a lot of information out there, um, and, uh, you know, between different contact tracing in the testing centers, sometimes I don't, um, I'm not able to read all the research out there, but I'd be more than happy if, if you can send that to me to read through that and, uh, provide something in a board update.
And then for, you mentioned children vaccinations, uh, what age limit are you talking about there?
Yeah, right now, the only ages that are, um, able to get vaccinated are 16 and up and it's only with Pfizer. And so Pfizer's the only vaccination that is available for any age 16 and up. There are tests, uh, studies out there for ages 12 and up, uh, but it has not been approved at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Amy tonight? Becky?
Yeah, Amy, hey, it's Becky. Um, so, uh, do you know what the, um, I believe the information from the CDC is that we're shooting for about a 75% herd immunity rate? Is that correct?
I've heard 70, but yes, somewhere around in there, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do, do you know what, because of course, you know, our kids and our teachers don't exist in a vacuum, right? I mean, we, we live in a community here. They don't just go from, you know, an isolated spot in a home to the classroom and then back again. Do you know what the herd immunity rate is estimated to be right now for Tarrant County and any of our surrounding counties? Because of course, we have staff that live not just in Tarrant County, but in, uh, Denton, somewhat in Wise, some in Dallas County as well.
Um, I actually asked that question last week, um, just between vaccinations and people who have natural immunity, so those that have had COVID. And right now they're still saying three months. Um, I'm sure there's more studies going to come out about that and figuring out it, what's called a tighter to figure out if that immunity lasts a little bit longer than three months. But with those with natural immunity and vaccination, um, Tarrant County, in my conversation with them, it was around 50%, maybe 55% herd immunity.
Okay, we don't know about the other counties around this because like I said, our staff lives.
And I, I do not know about the other, um, counties. I can certainly, um, find, um, resources there and ask and get that in a board update to you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions for Amy? None. Thank you, ma'am, for staying up late for us tonight.
You're welcome. Good night.
Night. Move on to item B, Act on Joint Election Agreement.
Yes, uh, GCISD is going to conduct a school board election on May the 1st and state election law requires that school districts conduct joint elections with at least one city within the district's boundaries. Uh, the law requirement to use electronic voting machines created a need for coordination of elections all across the county. And so therefore, Tarrant County Elections Office has created a single joint election agreement for all school districts and cities within the Tarrant County. It is attached. The recommendation is for the board trustees to approve the joint election agreement as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan, to have a motion for the recommendation. Coley?
To make a motion to approve Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you, Coley, in a second. Thank you, Louis, second. Any questions? Um, Becky?
Yeah, so, um, I've had some people reach out to me with some questions about how exactly the elections are run and who chooses the election judges since these are nonpartisan races? Is that something that maybe we could get a report to the board, um, on how, what that contract looks like between Tarrant County Elections and the school district and what ability we have to actually have a little bit more control over the administration of the elections that, that we're hosting?
Uh, we could certainly find out that information and, and, uh, get it to you.
Thank you. I would think. Never mind. Any other questions? None? All of us in favor? Question carries, 7-0. Move on to item C, Act on University, I'm sorry, Act on I-University Prep Waiver to Continue to Operate as a Full-Time Virtual School.
Just in January of 2013, uh, the board approved, uh, that we would move forward with our virtual that we would move forward with our virtual school that eventually became known as I-University Prep. Unfortunately, in May, after that decision was made, the legislature retroactively took that away from a GCISD and actually passed a law that said that you had to be in business as a virtual school prior to July first of two thousand thirteen. No, I'm sorry, January first of two thousand thirteen. And so, uh, at that point, we worked with Representative Prigleone to, uh, and also, um, TEA to be able to provide a waiver for us to begin, which happened a little bit later that summer. And we've been, um, having to renew that waiver ever since then. And so this is a recommendation for the board to approve, requesting this waiver this time for a three-year timeframe for I-University Prep to continue to work their good work that they do with, with their full-time virtual school that we have here in GCISD. The recommendations for the board trustees to approve the submission of a waiver to TEA to continue to operate I-University Prep Full-Time Virtual School for the following three school years, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two, and twenty-three, and then twenty twenty-three and twenty-four.
Do I have a motion for the recommendation?
I may, we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you, Mindy, in a second. Becky, uh, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries, seven zero. Move on to item D, Act on Change Order Number Zero Two to Lee Lewis Construction, Inc., to Upgrade or Replace the Fire Alarm System at the Early Childhood Development Center, Construction Package One, Renovations to Early Childhood Development Center and the Professional Development Education Center.
Yes, so the ECDC, of course, was damaged heavily during the, uh, the, the cold weather in February. And as we're working through this process to repair the ECDC so we can move our little children back into the ECDC, the, we've come across this requirement. Paula, would you add anything to that?
The only thing that I will mention about this is that it's still in the evaluation process as to whether or not it will be an upgrade or a full replacement of the fire alarm system. We're very hopeful that it will be an upgrade more so. And that would certainly be a lower cost than the amount that's included. So as mentioned in the write-up, it's an allowance, and any unused portion would be returned to the district once we can exactly what is going to be needed. And all of that will come with the Fire Marshal's approval.
Thank you, Paula, recommendations for the board trustees to approve Change Order Number Two to Lee Lewis Construction Incorporated, adding an allowance to upgrade or replace the fire alarm system at the ECDC in the amount of seventy thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion for the recommendation?
I'll make a motion that we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendations for the change order for number two.
Thank you, Louis, in a second. Casey, second. Any questions? None. Seeing none. All those in favor? Question carries, seven zero. Move on to item E, Act on the Donation from Colleyville Elementary School.
This Colleyville Elementary School PTA is donating eleven thousand five hundred dollars to purchase a new digital marquee sign for the campus site. The total cost of the sign is thirty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars, and the remaining balance is going to be covered by a donation from Student Council and the Campus Activity Funds of about ten thousand, eleven thousand, respectively. Campus coordinating this work with Facility Services. Certainly, we want to say thank you to the PTA, to the Student Council and the, and the campus for partnering for this upgrade to the marquee at Colleyville Elementary School. The recommendations for the board trustees to accept the donation of eleven thousand five hundred dollars from Colleyville Elementary School PTA to assist with the purchase of a digital marquee sign.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan, to have a motion.
I may, we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
In a second. Oh, Coley, I got Coley. Uh, second, and questions? We, no questions?
That's a lot of fundraising. Way to go, CES.
I was going to say that, I thought we better wait for the vote. Beat me to it, but you're right. All those in favor? Motion carries, seven zero, and yes, thank you very much, Colleyville Elementary School. That is a lot of fundraising, especially right now, it's going to be very difficult for them. Move on to item F, Review Trustees Continuing Education Credit Hours as of April twenty-six, twenty twenty-one.
Yes, the minutes of the last regular meeting of the board trustees held before an election of trustees must reflect whether each trustee has met or is deficient in meeting the training required for the trustee as the first anniversary of, of the day of the trustee's election or appointment. And so we do have a replacement page because these, um, these hours were updated today. And I'll ask the board president, Ms. Pardo, to announce that all these trustees have met the hours and read the hours, please.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Yes, they all have. And I guess I'd like to ask Jorge how you got that many hours in between yesterday and today? You've been busy. No, they just, they had not been sent over and reported, so. So here are our hours, Lisa Pardo at twenty-one point seven five, Mindy McClure at thirty-one point two five, Jorge Rodriguez at thirty-seven, Becky St. John at twenty-five point five, Louis Sullins at twenty-one point five zero, Coley Cantor at twenty-two, Casey Ford at thirty point seven five. All trustees have are, have all the hours that are required by the state. And Jorge wins this year. I don't know what you win, but you win. That is an information-only item. We'll move on to item G, the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget update.
Yes, Diane is here this evening to be able to give us an update on the current year's budget situation. Diane?
Okay, I'll make this quick. We did not have much changes. We continue to monitor our revenues and expenditures each month. Are projecting one hundred and thirty-eight point five million in revenues. Exponenter side, we're projecting one hundred and forty-two point five million. Uh, this leaves us an ending fund balance of four million, sixty-four thousand three hundred and eighty-nine decrease to fund balance, and then will leave us with an estimated ending fund balance of fifty-four million, oh, eighty, six hundred and forty-seven dollars. I did, Casey, I did go back and calculate right now with my projections, and we would have two point five percent of the budget remaining.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Any questions for Diane? Then move on to item H, Update for the Twenty-Sixteen Bond Program.
We, we do have a couple of projects currently happening right now, especially getting ready for the summertime. And so I'll pitch it to Paula. Let's see, Shannon's joined us.
Shannon, we are so sorry that this has been such a late night. We'll make up, we'll make it up to you, and we'll ask you lots of questions. So at least you'll, at least you'll feel like your time was well worth it. Oh, did you?
Yeah, this is great.
Multitasker.
Shannon, just remember to look back here. Yes, Paula will answer everything. Yeah. Well, thank you, guys, for having Huck be here tonight to give an update on the bond program. We want to first start with giving a quick update on where we're at with the twenty twenty projects. So last year, we had the Swim Center, which has been closed out a couple of months ago. We also have four elementary schools. Those, the work is complete there. Um, all the punch list items from last time have been completed. What we are lacking or still working through is test and balancing on a couple of those elementary schools, which is really just making sure that the HVAC system is working properly as expected with some of the upgrades that have occurred. At the high school, same thing over there, we're working through test and balancing. Um, we are also working on the fire alarm. So as of last Friday, the fire alarm completed as far as it could go until students get out of the building. Then we will finalize the work this summer. That means we have to test all of the alarms. So it's a very loud, noisy process. That work should be completed August second with approval from the Fire Marshal. Okay, moving to the twenty twenty-one projects, starting with the ECDC. So there was two schools that were passed earlier this year with GMP. It was ECDC and PDEC, so we'll start with those two first. First one being the Early Childcare Center. Um, the work is slated to start now. Um, unfortunately, due to the storm, but fortunately, we were already working in that building. So now we are able to have that building sooner due to the district being able to move the students out to another campus, which was, it was good, really great for the district that you guys were able to handle that pretty quickly. And great that Lee Lewis has been onboarded, so we can get that work done faster. The work should be complete by July thirty-first. Substantial completion and final completion will be August thirty-first. So that will just be wrapping up any loose ends. We were able to accept alternate for this building, which allowed that middle rectangle for us to split an additional third room. So it's not showing up on there, but that room will be split as well. So we are now adding three new classrooms to this building. Um, each of those rooms will serve at least a minimum of ten additional students. We are also changing out all of the child height sinks to an accessible ADA's height, replacing water heaters, relocating and adding a new laundry and storage room, adding restrooms to the new classrooms, so those will be child-accessible classrooms, adding infrastructure for the new video intercom at the front door and the door immediately entered inside the vestibule, upgrading the fire alarm equipment, which Paula just went through a little bit ago with the change order. Painting throughout, and we will also be touching the floor. So you can see from the storm damage, there is a little bit of drywall and paint and wall base and flooring that will need to be fixed in this project. Okay, moving to the PDEC, same thing. This building will not start work until June. We need to wait till most of the professionals and students are out of that building. Work will be complete July thirty-first. We will install new classroom door hardware for safety so that them turns. Uh, we'll add infrastructure, which is data cabling for a check-in and out kiosk. So if you've been to the elementary schools from prior work and the high schools, the kiosk at the front with badging, same thing that's in the lobby here out front, we will be adding that at the Vista entrance. We will restore the ceramic tile in the restrooms at Bridges and Vista. So those are the large group restrooms. We'll be using a process to clean all of the tile and the grout to make it like new. We are going to add occupancy sensors at interior classrooms, so this will help with efficiency of lights being on or off. Going to upgrade the intercom system so it works holistically throughout the entire building. Repair exterior drainage, so just to the north of the building, there's a lot of water that ponds and does not drain out of that facility, so we will fix that. We're going to upgrade all the exterior building-mounted light and parking lot lighting to LED, so that'll be a cost savings. And then add roller shades to the windows in Vista. Moving to the Transportation Center, so this is probably one of the biggest projects of the summer. We will be adding just shy of fifty thousand square feet of additional parking. That accounts for roughly thirty-nine new parking spots. And I think last time we mentioned that that will hold the size of all of the, the largest size bus possible. Right now, you have six of those buses, but in the future, if you add anymore, all of those spaces will accommodate that larger bus. We are also replacing light fixtures in the current parking lot to match the new LED. Um, this is just the fixture heads at the new parking lot. We're also replacing building-mounted lighting to LED, replacing the shop lights to LED, so better efficiency. Sealing any concrete crack joints that may exist in the existing concrete parking and drive for better longevity of that parking surface. Adding an awning over the propane fueling station and repairing the two gates that allow you to enter the main transportation center, one at the north, one at the south. That was also an alternate item that was accepted. Moving to the facility warehouse, so the next round of projects, these are currently in city review. Um, we did submit them for GMP last month. We have not received permits on them yet. So currently in city review, we have received some comments back, and we have submitted our responses back to those comments. We hope that we will have the permits by the end of April, end of this week or early next week. Construction is slated for June through July thirty-one. Um, with the exception of, at the facility building, there is a little book warehouse to the right, the building closest to the water tower. That book warehouse does have operations during the summer, so we will not start work in that warehouse until September first. So that will go through October thirty-first. The shop, which is next to the tax collections office, so the furthest left on the page, uh, we will add new electrical panels, new exhaust fans on the roof, so these are large industrial exhaust fans, one for one replacement, and replace a unit heater inside the shop, so for heat during the winter. Moving back to that facility service building that we were just in, where, where the book warehouse is, we are adding a new sprinkler system to both the office side and the warehouse side of that building. We are adding exhaust fans at the restrooms, placing unit heaters at the plumbing bay and adding unit heater inside of the shop, painting and adding flooring to the office portion. And the biggest part of it is we have wood, existing wood medenines in two, three locations of that building. Fire Marshal has asked us to remove those and replace them with cold form metal for fire reasons. Okay, the material storage building, part of the scope of that, that's where a lot of your equipment is stored. So what we're doing is we are replacing or fixing the fence around the entire property of the facility area. So that'll be a combination of wood fence and chain link fence. So along Mustang Drive will be your wood to do a matching like-for-like by the water tower and then chain link along the other side of the property. And then the large warehouse, this is the building that is attached and adjacent to the technology building and technology portable. We are adding a card reader at the loading dock. We are adding, replacing dock pads at one of those loading docks and replacing all of the lights at the interior of that warehouse with LED. Moving to CTMS, creek, creek drainage remediation. So this is quite, uh, an overhaul to concrete around the building. We know that this building has received some water into the athletics portion of the gym a couple of times. So what we're doing is removing about five hundred square yards of concrete around that building. That'll be to the north and the east side of the building. We are adding curb inlets, which are essentially just drains along the sidewalk. So there will be three large inlets along that sidewalk, which is adjacent to the side of the building that receives the most amount of water runoff. That drain will then filter down into the creek. And there's another drain just north of the property, south of the playyards, playfield, baseball field, that will, that drain will also be increased to accept more water. And then all of the concrete will be replaced to form positive drainage and runoff into that creek. We do know that the creek can accept the water. We have done several studies, we have worked with FEMA, and we will add truncated domes or concrete pads for the water to help slowly run off into that creek and flow as it should. Okay, going back to where we are over here, just, uh, south of us at the central portable buildings and the wood frame facility, we are doing a couple of upgrades there as well. This project will be done in July as well. For the portables at CRC three, we are replacing the carpet, so that is the prom dress portable. We are replacing or adding a fire alarm system to all the portables and the wood frame building to make them sync up together. We are completing some HVAC updates at all of those buildings. We are also replacing ceiling at CRC two, so portable building number two and the technology portable. At the administration, part of the work is to extend the underground drainage pipe. So right in front of the technology building, there is a head wall or a drain that dumps out right in front of the technology building that filters out into the parking lot currently. So as you drive up to this building, you probably will notice during a rainstorm or right after it that there is a lot of water in the parking lot that eventually will deteriorate that concrete. So what we're going to do is extend the storm line in front of the technology building all the way down all the way down to the main storm sewer that runs along the stadium. We're also going to seal and replace concrete joints throughout the parking lot as well. Something new that we have added is we, which we were always going to address, but we're doing it now a little bit sooner, is accessibility upgrades at the playgrounds. So some of your playgrounds are getting new equipment. And in order to install that equipment, we do need to meet ADA as far as how you get from a main point of the building to that equipment. But we did some surveys and we did conclude that some of the walks do not meet code. They're too steep. The ramps are too steep or they're too narrow. And then some of the joints are over an inch. So we're going to fix all of that. Bransford will be accelerated a little bit. That one will be completed this summer or hopefully by end of August. The others will be completed throughout the rest of the school year and final completion January 2022. We are doing what we can to accelerate that schedule as well.
She just included a couple of district projects that you might have an interest in. And in fact, the resurfacing of the tracks is one of those capital improvements that the board appropriated money for in May of last year. That work is going to be completed by June of this year. And then also as a part of the 2016 bond, we have a phase of furniture that's being replaced in the science and fine arts classrooms to include art classrooms at elementary. We may have a little bit of a hiccup on a couple of the high school science classrooms, which may delay some things until winter break, but I think in the end provide a better solution. These are classrooms that are not necessarily supposed to be labs, but oftentimes get used as a lab in addition to the lab. So we've been looking for furniture that is aligned with everything in the lead to 2021, lead 2.0 mantra, that also has a chemical protective surface on it. And so that's taken a little bit longer. It might take a little bit longer to get them, but it'll probably be better for those classrooms. Those are the, some highlights of district projects beyond the things that Shannon has already covered.
Thank you, Paula.
We have any questions for Shannon or Paula? Thank you again. And I'm sorry you've had to stay so late tonight.
And I know this year isn't as glamorous, but these things are needed for the long term of your district and keeping everything working properly and the longevity of it. We do also want to give our condolences. We worked with David Zarnt quite a bit in the past and he was so wonderful to be around. So we just wanted to say our condolences.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We move on to item I, remove, review the 2020-2021 board planning calendar.
Yes, sir, just a couple of changes to the board planning calendar for April. You can see one item that has about proposed compensation plan. And there are several items there. All of those really are for the month of June when we're considering the budget. I think that they were in here at one point, but we actually need to move them permanently to the month of June. And then foreign exchange waiver, we'll bring that to the board in May. So it's moving from April to May. Those are the only two changes on the board planning calendar.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Any questions on the board planning calendar? And then move on to item J, request for reports to the board. Do I have any reports, requests for reports? None? We'll move on. So if you'll, during the course of a meeting, discussion of any item on the agenda should be held in a closed meeting. The board will conduct a closed meeting in accordance with Texas Opens Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Sept chapters D and E. For all of that, I'm being sad, we are right now going to go into an executive session. It'll just be
Yes, it'll be brief. It's about personnel, which is actually item, item H on the consent agenda. But it'll be very brief and we'll come back and consider the consent agenda.
We are back in open session at 10:53. And we will move on to consent agenda for approval. Do I have a motion or any, any that need to be addressed?
Can we pull item F?
F is in Frank?
Yes.
Pulling item F. Any others? I need a motion for the remaining items?
I move that we approve items A through E and items G through P on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mindy. Do I have a second? Coley, second. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. So we'll move on to item F, construction report for March 2021. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, item F is the monthly construction report. It's posted and the recommendations for board trustees to approve the monthly construction report, which includes the 2005 bond fund report, 2011 bond fund report, 2016 bond fund report, and the report of projects from the proceeds of the sale of property as of March 31st, 2021.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Now, do we have questions on that?
Yeah, just had questions because I noticed it had changed from sort of the formatting. Just going to see if you could walk me through it.
We were trying to make these a little bit more user friendly and reading to be able to see in one glance what was available that had not been appropriated to other projects, the cash that's available. And so that's what we, so that page 103, for the third reconciliation is we are taking the cash. We're backing out the funds that have already been encumbered, like POs that have been issued. And then we are backing out the amount of money that has already been allocated to other projects. So this will show that 2005 has 676,200 cash available to be appropriated. Then when you go up page 104, we just wanted to have everything here tied to that reconciliation. So you see what's been budgeted, the remaining funds. But then we added a section here and this says available funds unallocated so that you can see what makes up that number.
And Paula, have, I know we reviewed sort of amounts that could go to unallocated funds. I think it was like maybe two or three months ago. Have, have we looked at that again for projects that have freed up? And do you have any other considerations or recommendations we should consider down the road?
Well, as we've kind of just generally talked about, some things that have bubbled up through the budget process itself. Some other projects, like one I'm in a conversation with the board about earlier today that we're looking so there's, you know, as part of our overall process, we're at that point in time. If you think about when the 16 bond was kind of put in place, long range planning that had gone before that really led up into 2015 for that stakeholders committee to consider. By the time the voters approved that in May of 16, the first projects that really could hit the ground, if you will, would have been summer of 17. So we're about four years into projects. We have two more years of projects. So a little less known about the 16 bond program and what we'll finally end with is the bottom line. But what's very clear is what is still available, any other two, which the district has spent and utilized for projects that were both approved, those bonds and other capital needs. In that point in time, starting really from about last year going forward of revising long range plan, one of the things that I talked about representation was the need for planning in the future to include some consultants that would do some of the bigger things that personnel within the district themselves really don't have the expertise to do. As an example, I'll say getting on a roof, looking through warranty documents and previous repairs to identify which are the ones that are still appropriate versus a full replacement. Looking at something like that with all of the data and information. So that, that piece of it still needs to be done, obviously as part of long range planning is to have those kinds of people in place to do that type of analysis. Are there projects that we know of, that I know of as a school district that we probably consider in the future? Technology standpoint, we've seen things that are going to come due because of the bond process. We're going to see other facility needs that we have that were not even addressed in the last bond program or the one before, as well as new things that will have developed because of changes or other deterioration, just natural things. Track resurfacing was an interesting one because it didn't make it into the 16 bond, but we knew it was going to come due and it did. And that was one of the things that we asked the board to appropriate last May and being accomplished now. So I don't know if that completely answered your question. I'm happy to answer anything more specific.
Yeah, it helps a little. I guess in addition to that, so basically you're putting a long-term plan together. What's our, what's our long-term plan right now? Is just project out a couple of years or does it, do we have a long-term plan we currently have?
Five, 10, and 15, depending on the asset that you're looking at. So take buses, for example, we're, we're always looking at the inventory of buses. When you're looking at roofs, you're looking, you're projecting longer out. What's going to come due in five years, 10 years, 15? Because ultimately, when you present to stakeholders in the future or the board, if you're looking at unallocated funds, how long is this, you know, how long will this carry you with what you know might be coming due in the near future?
Okay. And then I noticed we have interest earned. What rate are we earning on, on the cash that's on hand? Like for instance, I think it's in 2011, we have almost 17 million, just a little over cash. And then in the 16 bond cash on hand. It's basically, well, 80, but, but less than encumbrances, so 66 billion. What kind of interest are we earning on that and what sort of our investment plan we're doing with that?
I will have to get back with you. I'm not, I haven't looked at the pool rates here in a while, but it's less than 1%.
And how much are we paying interest on this money?
Do not have that, that information with me right now.
If you could just get that in the, this Friday's report would be good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. So all those in favor? Oh, I thought we, I thought we had a motion. And we shouldn't have even had any of that conversation. I thought we had, we had a motion. We had a recommendation and a motion and a second. So we need a motion, so we need a vote on F. Oh my gosh, I am so sorry, guys. I've, I missed
I move that we accept item F.
I am so sorry, I missed that one. A second? So now you can ask your questions.
Just see the previous questions. See the previous questions.
You're out of order earlier, sir. You're all out of order. Sorry about that. So now we can vote. All those in favor of item F? Motion carries seven zero. Okay. Move on to announcements. Before, before our next meeting, board meeting, we do have two graduations, May 19th. We're excited about Bridges and Collegiate Academy. What else is? We have tomorrow. Raise your hand. Y'all got the information from Dr. Ryan? I told him that I, I missed the vote on that. That's the first I'd heard of that was happening. So for all of those who can attend, Dr. Ryan has sent, sent the information on that.
We have a big track, mate. State track.
The seventh? So that'd be a fun Mother's Day weekend. And also I'd like to say on record, we missed a very important day. And we would like to apologize to Ms. Kim Hato that we missed your day last week for administration assistant day. And we are so sorry. You do so much for each one of us. You always have a smile on your face. You always say yes. What can I do for you? So you're greatly appreciated. I mean that with all sincerity. You are a great asset. So we do have, we didn't send you flowers. It's in the back. We bought you a rose bush that you can go home and plant. So you can always see that you are appreciated. Or you can look at it and think of us, whatever you want to do.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna add something to that. Do not go home and plant it. You make Hut plant it.
There we go.
Because it was a gift to you. You use your finger and tell him where to plant it.
There you go.
And you can tell Hut I said that.
Thank you, Cam, very much. So I need a motion, no other announcements. I need a motion to adjourn. Louis?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
A second? Casey, second. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Meeting adjourned at 11:04.